Well, good evening all. It is July 17th, 2017. This is, it's 7:05. We're starting just a little bit late. I apologize for the late start. We were in executive session. So if I could ask all present here, all members of the Board of Selectmen are indeed present this evening. If I could ask everyone to stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God with the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have some Treasury warrants to approve. Fifty-three, fifty-three A, fifty-four, fifty-four A, fifty-five, fifty-five A, one, one A, two, and two A. We're starting a new set. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Is there discussion on any? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We do have several sets of minutes to approve or to review and approve. Why don't we take them up individually if that's okay with everyone? Because there are some changes, not changes, but we had Ed who was not involved in a couple of them, so I want to make sure we reflect that. So the minutes of January 23rd, 2017, I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion is made?
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? I see none. Is there a vote, I'm sorry, so all in favor of voting those?
Yes.
We have four and one abstention. The minutes of April 10th, 2017, I would accept a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Seconded.
Have a motion made and seconded. Is there discussion on the April 10th minutes? I see none. All in favor? Four and one abstention. Thank you. And the minutes of the April 24th Board of Selectmen meeting, I would accept a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Have a motion made?
Seconded.
And seconded. Is there discussion? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Minutes for the meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting of May 22nd, 2017, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Seconded.
And a seconded. Is there discussion? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Into our scheduled appointments, again, we were meeting prior to this open session in executive session for the purpose of discussing real property issues. Our seven o'clock scheduled appointment is with Ms. Christina Stewart, Library Director, with a report on programs and activities at Wilmington Memorial Library. Tina, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, yes, thanks. Well, I'm here today to give you an update on what's been happening at the Wilmington Memorial Library. And I'd like to begin by sharing with you some awards that we recently received. In May, at the Massachusetts Public Library Association Conference, we received three Public Relations Awards. And we got first place for our Library Ambassador tee-shirt. So a little backstory, we initiated this Library Ambassador program in March of 2016. And what we did was invited some of our regular library users to come and join us in helping promote the library and sharing with their friends and neighbors what's going on at the library, just to get, help get the word out. But of course, a library ambassador needs a tee-shirt, and a tee-shirt needs a logo. So we asked Becky McGrath to help us design the logo for the tee-shirt for the Library Ambassadors. If you've been to the Festival of Trees, you may have seen Becky's images of Wilmington Village, of some of the recognizable buildings in Wilmington. So she took those buildings and she imposed those on a book. And with the slogan, we came up with, "Behind every great community is a great library." So we won first place for this tee-shirt. And as you know, Becky was our 2017 good guy, and she volunteered her time and talent for this project. But we also won first place for our website. And we launched our new website in February of 2016, and we hired Tomo360, who, the owner of Tomo360 is Susu Wong, she's a Wilmington resident. And Susu and her team worked with our library staff, especially our tech librarian Brad McKenna, in updating our website, so it's more user-friendly and mobile-friendly. So we received first place for our library website. And we also received third place for our teacher newsletter. Barbara Robb, our children's librarian, creates a teacher newsletter that goes out to the elementary school teachers and to inform them about all the services and programs that are available to teachers and students. So that's an email newsletter that she does periodically, and we received third place for that newsletter. And we recently found out that we were voted the most loved library in the Merrimack Valley by this organization called Hula Frog. It's an online email newsletter for parents that informs parents about events for kids. So we were delighted to receive that. And of course, our summer reading program is underway, and I'm pleased to report over 1,000 children in Wilmington have signed up for the summer reading program to date. And anyone who wants to know what's going on this summer at the library can pick up one of our events brochures. We have one for children, one for adults. The theme for this, for the summer reading program this year is Build a Better World. And of course, our goal is to keep kids reading all summer long to make sure their literacy skills do not fall behind, so that they're ready to go in September. One of the things I wanted to point out is that we are turning outward more, increasing our visibility in the community. And just to highlight some of the things that our Children's Department has done this summer, Barbara Robb, in June, she's our Youth Services Librarian, she did a storytime at Silver Lake Beach, which was very successful. And she did a storytime last week at Yantow Farm. And she's going to be doing a storytime at the Farmers Market on July 30th, 30th, at 10:00 a.m. And our Teen Services Librarian hosted a dodgeball and Quidditch game at the Yantow Playing Field in June. So we have been certainly taking advantage of some of the great spots in Wilmington to do some programs. And in August, that's our second annual Summer Bash. As you know, last year, we had a Summer Bash on the Swain Green with some food trucks. And they're coming back again on August 10th from 5:00 to 7:30. And we'll have, the food trucks will be there, people will be able to buy dinner, we'll have entertainment, balloon artists, games for kids. So come on down, don't cook that night, and come down and enjoy the evening. But our big, the big community event is this September. It's our Mass Memories Roadshow, which I'm sure you've seen in Town Topics, and recently there was an article in Town Crier. This event is, again, September 30th. It's going to be held at the High School Cafeteria on Saturday, September 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Mass Memories Roadshow is a statewide history project. It's run by UMass Boston that documents people, places, and events by digitizing photographs that will create a photographic history of the town. And UMass Boston has done this roadshow in 31 towns, so we're really pleased to have them coming to Wilmington. I want to acknowledge Charlotte Wood, the Assistant Library Director, who has spearheaded this project, and she's been meeting with community partners since March. And I think this flyer is in your packet. If you notice, I'd like to refer the audience, all the partners that are participating in helping us get the word out about this event, and will be there as well. We have the Town Manager's Office of Town of Wilmington, Department of Elderly Services, the Department of Veterans Affairs, Historical Commission, WCTV, Wilmington Community Fund, Fourth of July Committee, Wilmington Public Schools, Chamber of Commerce, the Catholic Community of Wilmington and South Tewksbury, the Wilmington United Methodist Church, the Abundant Life Church, Rotary Club of Wilmington, Where One Wilmington, the Sons of Italy, Girl Scouts, the Wilmington Little League, Cub Scout Pack 361, Wilmington Youth Soccer, the Town Crier, Friendship Lodge, and Eames. So we're, again, I think this is another example of the library connecting with the community on a very, you know, big scale here. And the most important is really to start to capture the pictures of Wilmington. So this is a little bit about for you and for our listeners. So who's invited? Anyone who has lived, worked, or attended school in Wilmington is invited. It does not matter if you've lived here for a generation or just moved here last year. All are welcome. On all ages may participate. Children under 18 must have parental permission. There's a form that can be filled out that day, or we can give you the form ahead of time. So what should you bring? You may bring up to one to three photos. They could be print or digital, that best tells your Wilmington story. Photos can be current or historic. They can include special family occasions, weddings, birthdays, first day of school. They can include sporting events, community events, social gatherings. You could bring pictures of your political campaigns. That would be great. Businesses, pictures of opening day ribbon cuttings of your business, or people at your business. Sure. So what will happen to the photos? Your photos will be scanned, and then they'll be returned to you. And this is optional, but you'll have an opportunity to be videotaped describing the story behind that photo as well. Then the Wilmington Collection of Photos will be added to the Mass Memories Roadshow Archive. They have a website, and we'll link to that archive website on our website, so it's very easy for people to find. So again, we really hope that you will come, but also that you will invite others to come to this event. And if you have any questions, there is, go to the Mass Memories Roadshow website. It's in the, on the flyer, and is also in Town Topics, if you want to just get some ideas of the other communities and what they've done with this event. And in closing, I just want to point out one more item. We have a customer satisfaction survey on our homepage and our website. And we're just three simple questions for anyone who would like to let us know how we're doing, and that's really the purpose of the survey. We ask people, "How would you rate the overall services of the Wilmington Library? And would you recommend the library to a friend? And has a staff member been especially helpful?" And we've been pleased we've gotten, you know, mostly positive comments, and I wanted to read one from a patron. Her name is Mary Mahoney. And, "How would you rate the overall services of the Wilmington Library? Excellent. Would you recommend the library to a friend? Yes. And has a staff member been especially helpful? Tell us about it. It's impossible to choose from all, from among all the staff members who have provided me with suburb service for over 15 years. Everyone is great. Each person answers my questions with expertise and chillfulness. Wilmington should be very proud of its library." So, you know, we love getting comments like that. But I also encourage residents, if they don't have a positive experience, we want to know how we can improve. And we will promise to get back to anybody who emails us and rectify their problem or do, make the change that we need to. So again, it's about hearing. We love hearing the good stuff, but we also need to hear if there's anything negative so we can improve. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart, very much for being here and for the breadth of services that you provide, that you and your staff provide to the town. I want to open it up to my colleagues here, and Greg, I'll start over to my right, certainly for comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Stewart, for being here. Wonderful presentation. As usual, congratulations on the awards that you mentioned earlier. And thank you for emphasizing the importance of reading for our children. It's exciting to hear, not only as a schoolteacher, but just as a resident. You said 1,000 kids have signed up. That's terrific. That's just outstanding. And then I would encourage everyone to attend the upcoming events. You also have a comedy show coming up this Friday?
We sold out, yes.
Sold out this Friday, featuring our own Steve York.
Steve York, yeah.
So I'm sure that'll be a success. But that's a nice offering that you have for adults. So I appreciate the diverse offerings that you have, not only for the kids, but for the adults. And for the Mass Memories, I'm sure I can dig up a photo of me and Mark playing basketball in your driveway.
I hope so, yeah.
Growing up. So thank you for everything you do, and certainly your staff and you guys are the best in the business. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those remarks as well. Congratulations on the awards and what you're doing. 1,000 children on the reading program, that's outstanding. These brochures that you have here, are they, where would someone get them?
Oh, at the library, yeah.
Okay.
We also put them at Market Basket, they're here at Town Hall.
Because they're great brochures.
Yeah, and they're in the Rec Department, yes.
Okay.
And all those events are also listed online, but it's, yes, but those brochures are available. Town Hall, Library, Market Basket, sort of places.
That's great. Yeah, and the Memories Roadshow, I think that's going to be a huge success. So congratulations on that as well.
Thank you. Listen, I'm glad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, once again, congratulations on winning the best library in the Merrimack Valley area. Not only are you proud of that, you know, that goes to reflection on the employees that work there. Not only for them, it's a reflection on the whole town as a whole. If the police win an award, or the firefighters, or a department wins, and you're right, it all comes down to customer service. And I'm really glad to hear that, of say, other than hearing the good, if we do something wrong, because obviously you want to know, but I hear nothing but great, and it's a great place, and best of everything, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations on all the awards to you and your staff. Thank you for being the best, because the library is one of the reasons why Wilmington is one of the best towns to live in. And we really appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have a lot more of unique comments to make, other than you have historically, it's no surprise that you won those awards. You have historically through the years come and revealed why and how you are keeping libraries relevant in our communities. You know, I think there was, and I can't speak for other folks, but there's a tendency to think of libraries as big buildings full of books. And certainly, I'm not suggesting that your building doesn't have books in it, but it has so much more. And that really does, again, keep it very relevant and very important, and it has a very valuable role in our community. And that's through the hard work of you and all the people that you employ. So thank you for continuing to make all these programs available for every age within the town, and we ask you to continue to do it, because it's adding value to our community. So thank you for that.
And thank you for your support. Thank you.
Jeff, did you have any more to offer there?
Only that I've consistently been impressed with Tina's leadership and her staff in really being on the cutting edge of library services. It is clearly more than just a repository of books, and Tina and her staff have made sure that they're a connection with the community, a conduit for many groups to get together and learn from each other, and to, a place for meetings to take place. So it's a very good arrangement.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you again, Tina. Thank you.
Tina, you get a 3X on that tee-shirt for any chance?
Yeah. You gotta pay a little extra for that?
It doesn't have, I have a 3. We do have extra large.
All right, good. Yeah. That's a nice way to start a meeting. We will move into our scheduled 7:15 appointment. Again, apologies for being just a little bit behind schedule. This is with our own Michael Woods, DPW Director, and Co. Ishikura, President of Green International Affiliates Incorporated, with regards to an update on the Route 38 corridor improvements. Jeff, I don't know if you want to do any more formal introductions on that, or just hand it over to Mike?
Mike.
All right. Mr. Woods, thank you for being here. We'll turn the ball over to you, sir.
All right, I'm going to do the easy looking this evening. We're here to talk about a section of Route 38 that we come forward to board back in 2014 to reconstruct and revamp. We've been working diligently with Mass Highway and with our consultant, Green International. And we are very close to submitting to MassDOT the 25% design that we believe will take place. But what we're asking, why we're here tonight is, before we do submit that to MassDOT, we'd like to get your comments and any of the public's comments that are here. And then anyone listening to this, they can call me and make comment, and we'll pass those along, possibly incorporate those into the drawing before we submit them to MassDOT, because once they have them, then it's, it goes to their world, if you will, and they will be holding a public hearing on the full 25% design after they do their review, and there'll be another chance to comment then. But the time to make real changes is tonight, if there's something that jumps out at you that you find is problematic. So with that, not to belabor the point, I'm going to turn it over to Koishikura, the Principal of Green International, and his staff. I believe Wing Wong will be doing the presentation, who's been one of the chief engineers on this project.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Wing Wong with Green International Affiliates. I'm here with Paul Maluski, who's the project engineer. I'm also in attendance, Koishikura, the president, as well as Philip Kendall, who's the Transportation Department Manager of us. So we're very excited here tonight to present to you where we are, where we stand with the design in terms of the Route 38 project, and where it stands right now, and get comments from you, and get feedbacks from you, so that we can move on and advance the project further. What we're going to talk about here tonight, just want to give a brief project overview of what we have done thus far, some of the goals for the project, and then I'm going to turn it over to Paul, who's going to go into a little more detail about what we're proposing along the corridor, as well as go into a little more detail in terms of improvements at several key intersections. And then finally, we'll provide summary of what the steps will be anticipated going forward after tonight. So as some of you already are aware, the Route 38 project starts at the Route 62 intersection up here in the north. That's right next to the Commuted Rail Line Station, roughly the start of the project. And we're going to head south for roughly a two-mile stretch all the way down to the Woburn Town Line, as highlighted here. That's just a brief outline of what the project limits are. Route 38 is mainly a two-lane principal arterial roadway, as most of you are aware, and the speeds are roughly around 30 to 45 miles posted. We started the project with the town about September 2016, and since then, we've actually done quite a bit, especially with data collection. And that's traffic data, we've done survey. We also done what's called a road safety audit in January of this year with town personnel, as well as folks from Mass DOT. And the purpose of that is identify safety concerns or safety issues along the entire corridor, so that some of these improvements could potentially be incorporated into this project. So a lot of those elements are actually in the design, and which Paul will go over more. Other items we've done, we've advanced the design, and we've met with the DPW, we've met with Mass DOT District to present to them where the design is headed. So the design that you see tonight is actually very similar to what we have presented, but at the same time, we've incorporated some coordination elements and some comments already from the DPW, as well as the District. Before we get into the proposed design, just want to go over, you know, some of the project goals. Up here, top of the list, improve safety and overall traffic operations. Certainly, there's a, we identify a huge need there for both. We also learned that the town has a desire for continuous pedestrian accommodations, especially from the newly constructed Yantow Farm down to the Dock Park. So I think you'll be happy that we took that into consideration, and now I think it's come into a reality. We also identified there's several intersections, driveway, where certainly the geometry can be improved for better traffic operations, as well as for safety. So again, Paul will go over more into detail on that. There was also a desire from the town to improve utilities, the water main and the sewer main along Route 38. So having a project, a roadway construction project like this, there's no better time to do those work together with the roadway, since the road's going to be rip-up. So it'll be a perfect opportunity for do that. As part of the project, the associated improvements, we'll also be able to address the drainage as well. Certainly on Route 38, there's several spots where drainage is a bit of a concern, so as part of this project, we'll definitely take care of that. And last but not least, we'll identify some areas where we can do some improvements to the aesthetics of the corridor and provide some landscape treatments, one of which, and I don't want to steal Paul's thunder, will be at the railroad adjacent to the Route 62 intersection. Some of the background information from the data we collected, Route 38 carries anywhere from 12,000 to 21,000 vehicles a day, depends on which stretch you are. As you know, there are two existing traffic signals out there, certainly Route 62, and as well as the Route 129 intersection. The peak, the peak, traffic peak hours are pretty similar to what you expect, 7:00, 7:15 in the morning, to 5:00 and 6:00 at night and the PM. As I mentioned, we did a road safety audit together with the town and Mass DOT, and we identified a total of 139 crashes within a three-year study period. Now, that certainly is a high number, that already jumps out at you, has potential safety issues. Fortunately, there were no fatalities during this period, but however, that does not mean that there are no safety improvements that can be made. The calculated crash rates out of those 139 crashes actually is still higher than the state average, so again, another indication that certainly there's some things we can do here. So this time, I'd like to turn it over to Paul, who's going to go over a lot more detail in terms of the improvements that would be proposed.
Thank you, Wing. Like we mentioned, I'm a senior engineer on this project. So basically, when we first lay out any kind of roadway, we want to make sure that we're limiting impacts to our environment. We may be wanting to limit impacts to wetlands, to Butters, whether those be residences or businesses. So we want to make sure we provide a safe design that works, but also limits impacts, make everyone happy. We also want to make sure we meet Mass DOT funding requirements, and in order to do that, we have to make sure that we meet certain design criteria set forth by Mass DOT, whether those be lane widths, shoulder widths, a necessity for sidewalks, ADA requirements, SARMET, things like that. So some of the project features we looked at were our roadway section. So when I say roadway section, I mean, what are our travel lanes, what are their widths, shoulders? So in general, we're going to be providing 11-foot travel lanes on this job with 5-foot shoulders, and then we'll alternate where our sidewalk is, or we may have sidewalk on both sides, depending where we are on the project. So typically, Mass DOT wants to see 12-foot lanes, but at a minimum, again, in order to reduce impacts, we're going to be going with those 11-foot, 11-foot travel lanes.
What's a 5-foot shoulder mean? You don't mean, for the laborers?
Oh, yeah, sure. So basically, you have your travel lane. You're working from the center lane of the road out, you have your travel lane, and the additional space there is what we call the shoulder. So it's basically from your...
For turning purposes?
No, it's just an additional buffer. Say you have your travel lane, then you have a 5-foot buffer to the sidewalk.
Okay.
Between the white line and the curb?
There you go, yes. Yep. So there's also several locations where we're going to be realigning the roadway, just to make safer condition. One of the, one of the obvious places will be, and we'll show you later, is that Cross Street. So... It'll be a Cross Street. Sidewalks. It might be a little difficult to see on this graphic over here, but the blue line that we're showing here represents sidewalk that we're proposing on the east side of the, of the road, and that would be taking place from Main Street to Cross Street. And then the orange line on this graphic represents sidewalk that we're proposing on the west side of the road. So that would be from about Triple Nickel Autobody, which is south of the 62 intersection, all the way down to the project limits at the Woburn Town Line. We had looked at proposing sidewalk on the east side of the road as well, all the way down the Woburn Town Line, but we found that impacts to property owners and wetlands were just, they outweighed the benefits, basically. And then we also looked at utilities on this project. So we're going to be proposing a closed drainage system, where we're going to be proposing new catch basins and manholes to just convey that water off the road, discharge it out into a detention basin or a wetland. And we also are proposing a water main. This will be a water main replacement that's going to happen from Route 62 intersection to Eames Street. And then we'll have a much shorter segment of sewer relocation, or sewer replacement that will be happening from Route 129 to Cross Street. Finally, landscaping. We're currently working with our landscape architect to determine opportunities for beautification, trying to green up the area a little bit. One location that we're looking at in particular is along the train tracks just south of the Route 62 intersection, so we'll take a closer look at that. So that proposed roadway cross-section I was talking about, and this is where I can show you where our shoulder is exactly. So if you look at the top figure here, this is as if you were imagining looking down the road, looking south. We have our two southbound travel lanes, 11 feet wide. We have a northbound travel lane, 11 feet wide. And then we have 5-foot shoulders on either side of the road. So that's where your white stripe would be located. Then we also have our 5-1/2-foot sidewalks. Another typical section that we're looking at is from Cross Street to the Woburn Town Line, Town Line looking south. Here we have 11-foot travel lane in northbound and southbound directions, and again, the 5-foot shoulders. Here we have a 5-1/2-foot sidewalk on the right side, and we're showing a 2-foot asphalt berm on this side, because in general, for the majority of that segment, we're proposing, we're not proposing a sidewalk. Again, it's just a typical, general section. So some of the key intersections we're going to be looking at here, the Route 38, Route 62 intersection up here, the Route 38, Route 129 intersection, which I'm even having a hard time seeing from here, the Route 38, Cross Street, and Butters Row intersection. And then we're looking at the Route 38 and Old Main Street, all the way down here towards the southern project limits. So what we have here is the existing intersection at Route 62. Here you can see the MBTA commuter, commuter rail tracks. Just north of the intersection up here is the MBTA station. When we're looking at lane, existing lane configurations, the southbound approach on Route 38, we have a shared through and right lane, and we have a shared through and left lane. So basically, that means anyone, people who want to continue straight through, through the intersection and take a turn are both sharing that same lane. So you can imagine that can cause some delays for people who want to continue straight through the intersection, having to wait for someone making a left turn movement. Opposite the intersection, we have this short merge here, and this creates a dangerous situation because you can imagine two cars that want to go straight are almost racing and jockeying for position in front of one another to, to make it across that intersection. So we'll, we'll show you what we're proposing there. Here at the Route 62 eastbound approach, there's a designated right turn lane and then a shared through left. Here at the Route 38 northbound approach, we have a left, designated left turn lane and a lane designated for through movement and right turns. And then on the Route 62 westbound, we have a left turn movement and a designated, designated left turn movement and then a right through. We currently have a situation where some of these businesses here are using on-street parking for their businesses. That technically isn't allowed on a state highway, but we'll get to that in a little Just to mention also, the signal phasing at this intersection is not quite as efficient as it could be. It currently operates under split phasing, which means left turns can't, can't make their left turns at the same time. For example, if someone wants to make a left turn here on Route 62 to Route 38, they have to wait until they get the green after these left turn movements are, are done making their movement. But I'll, that's the opposite of what we're proposing. We're basically proposing these two movements to occur at the same time, getting everyone through the intersection more efficiently and relieving traffic.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
No matter what happens here, it's going to take a while. Can we get the, those light phasing changed now or start the process of getting it changed? Does it make sense to do that?
I don't know if it would work as efficiently without the lane configurations that we're proposing, but-
That's certainly something we can coordinate with Mass DOT. I think once the 25% design is submitted, Mass DOT gets a chance to review what the analysis would show in terms of timing and phasing. Some of the lane configuration changes may be able to be, to be done with the maintenance, but I think that's something we have to work out with Mass DOT.
Because it is awful, the light timing is awful there.
Absolutely, we absolutely agree with that.
Any improvement would be much appreciated by everyone in town, even before construction started, I bet you it would help.
Yeah, as Paul mentioned, the split phasing, basically, there's just a lot of inefficient time because you have to wait for one side of Burlington Ave. to go versus the other side. So something that we will propose to, to change that. So hopefully after the 25%, we can approach Mass DOT and then see if we can get something going.
Thank you.
Thanks. So here we have the proposed condition, our proposed design. I should just briefly explain the, the gray obviously is the roadway. Sidewalk is in orange, if you can see that. The right-of-way lines are in red, and then hopefully you, you can make, make out the traffic pavement markings. So this is similar to a concept that we presented back in 2014 with some, some revisions to it. So to go in the same order as last time, if you were looking at the southbound approach here, we're now creating a left turn pocket, get those cars out of the way, allow through movement to occur unimpeded. Now opposite of that, where, now we no longer have the situation where cars are trying to jockey for position across the intersection and merge across that short, short distance. Now we're proposing two receiving lanes for a distance of, of about 900 feet or so. This allows for a much more efficient and better operating intersection.
Can I just ask a question there? Is the amount of pavement south of the intersection going to be expanded?
It's going to be widened a little bit, yep. So in order to achieve these two receiving lanes, we're going to be widening a little bit towards the MBTA property. So we're currently, in, in, we're currently trying to schedule a meeting with Mass DOT and the MBTA, which is going to happen hopefully August to September, to iron out those issues and get approval for that because a lot of the, the efficiencies of this intersection will, will depend on that.
A quick question, if I may, there, you mentioned this is going to go from the 62 intersection down to Woburn. How far towards the train station are you going to go? You just mentioned the left lane there, yes, that section. How far down is that going?
This, what we plan on doing in this area is mostly just pavement marking work. There is not going to be any real widening of the roadway in this location or any real-
So it's safe to say, the train station would be the furthest you went?
I would say so, with our pavement markings.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be until about here where now we're looking at some reconstruction because we're going to widen slightly into the existing mulch area that's along this retaining wall here. So yes, we're going to be impacting the railroad property a little bit, so we're going to set up a meeting to discuss that. And this is, as I briefly mentioned earlier, the opportunity to provide some kind of landscape buffer. We're going to be proposing a fence along here, but along with that, we're going to be proposing some kind of vegetative screening. You know, otherwise, if we didn't propose some kind of landscaping, you'd probably have weeds growing wild on the fence and it would just be kind of unsightly.
Can I just ask a question? When you're, I do agree with widening out that area because there is, seems like there's quite a bit of land, but it seems to extend beyond that 900 feet, even to where that sign, the billboard is, there seems like there's plenty of land that goes even further down. Have you thought about going even further?
That 900 feet was based on this, this report that's set out, basically explaining what the most efficient or the most optimum length for receiving lanes is given certain situations. We didn't want to take it any further because then we're really getting into the triple nickel auto body where we'd be really impacting his parking. As it is, we are going to be impacting his parking, but we came up with some solutions to, to mitigate that the best we could.
Just another question there. I'm glad to hear that you're going to be making some aesthetic improvements to that area. I know Mr. Shampoo brought up in the past about trying to improve that area, but I do know that the, and I'm sure you know, the MBTA accesses the tracks there. So you mentioned a fence. It's fine by me if they don't access it there anymore, but I'm assuming they're going to have to access it somewhere.
Is it the-
They drive trucks, I mean, almost-
Oh, I see, there, there's access here. I'm sure we, we'd coordinate something and provide some kind of accommodation. We'd have to coordinate with MBTA on that.
Thank you. I want to just simply, as long as we're sort of doing this organically, I just wanted to really say that when I went through these documents and now listening to you, one of the things that really stood out for me as a dramatic need for improvement that I see scheduled, or at least as part of your proposal, is the screening of the tracks in that area. More than one person in this community have come to me through the years and have articulated that that area was in dire need of some improvement just from an aesthetic standpoint. It didn't show Wilmington as beautiful as, as the town we are, so I'm delighted to hear you guys are going to work on that. Thank you very much for including that.
Yeah, if anybody's stuck in traffic, they want to look at some-
Yeah, look at some, look at some pretty trees.
That's right.
No, that's understandable. So again, like I mentioned earlier, the on-street parking at this northeast corner here, because vehicles are making this left turn from Route 62 eastbound, any vehicles parked here would really be in the way. So we're hoping to work with the town and the property owners to come up with some solutions for, for that situation. And then another thing is, again, we're, we're making upgrades to the, the signals at this location. So now, left turn lanes on 62 and 38 are going to be able to run concurrently. There won't be a need to wait for the other opposing side of the intersection to clear in order to, for your light to turn green, so get those cars out more efficiently. When we ran our analysis, we did find that in the future condition, no build versus our proposed, that we're showing you here, that this, this proposed condition would result in about a 60% reduction in traffic delays in, in the future.
Can I quote you on that?
Roughly?
Just joking.
Up to, up to exceed. So here we have the next key intersection, Route 129, Route 38 intersection. This is the existing condition today. This project was, I believe, constructed somewhere around 10 years ago. However, since then, the, the requirements for shoulder widths have changed, and we'd also like to provide a continuous 5-foot shoulder through this area. So we'll show you in the upcoming slides what we propose here. It's a pretty busy intersection, you have the gas station here at the corner, you have the car dealership here, several other businesses. However, some of the tree grates are in really bad disrepair in this area, if you're familiar with it. Also, some of the wheelchair ramps don't meet current ADA compliance. So this is the proposed condition we have. Doesn't look a whole lot different, different. The link configurations are pretty much the same, same, except what we're doing is we're providing, again, that 5-foot continuous shoulder through this, through this area. And we're going to be doing that by holding this western or southern edge and widening to the north or the east, depending how you look at this. So currently, in front of this, this car dealership, there's a grass buffer separating the roadway from their parking lot. So our intent is to not, is to not impact that property any further than that grass buffer, so we wouldn't be impacting their parking or their circulatory pattern in the parking lot or anything like that. Would also be providing ADA compliant wheelchair ramps, and the traffic signal here would also be coordinated with Cross Street. We found that the intersection or the coordination improvements that we're going to make here improve this intersection from a level of service C to a level of service B. And when I say level of service, that's just a measure of how efficiently an intersection is working. You know, the intersections are graded on a level of A through F. A meaning it's ideal, F meaning there's a lot of delays and it's not working.
Is it safe to say that those grades kind of correspond with what, what my thinking is, school grades?
I would think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I also ask you, I guess it's the, at that point, right in front of, it's not the, maybe go back a slide, it's easier to illustrate. And, there you go. The auto dealership is left of the screen, and then between the auto dealership and, I believe it's Karenin Avenue, there's a, a business, a towing business if I'm not mistaken, or a, a garage right there. That's correct. And I see in the next slide, the red line indicates a cutoff of some parking area of the, the auto garage and not of the auto dealership. Am I right in that?
Well, the red line represents the right-of-way line, so that's basically the property line. So if this is correct, this is telling me that this is actually state-owned in here.
I see, okay.
Yeah. So actually, in that, in that, for that property, it doesn't look like we're even impacting their property.
Thank you. It's, it's an allusion to me, so thank you.
Yeah. Route 62.
At Route 62?
Yes.
Along the tracks?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. So at this intersection, we're proposing a, to lengthen this left turn lane, and we found that that helped improve traffic operations, it provided more storage length for vehicles that wanted to let, make left turns onto Route 62. So in order to do that, we created some property impacts, unfortunately, in this area. However, those aren't going to exceed any more than 5 to 6 feet, basically the width of a sidewalk. So these parcels in this, in this location, under this condition, have some property impacts.
There's only sidewalks there now?
There is sidewalk there now, but since we're widening slightly-
There'd be no sidewalks?
No, we're, we're proposing sidewalk here. And it's, it's also here where we're going to be, we're going to be impacting these parcels as well. There is a sidewalk here today, and we're, we're just going to be putting it back, essentially. The only reason, I mean, this red, right-of-way line is showing, is showing itself located right in the middle of the sidewalk, and that could be the case. It could be that the property line is running right through the sidewalk, the-
So I have a question while you get this up. What's the service level of this intersection right now?
Um, where did we say this was?
And then, then what, yeah, it can't be that good if they're looking. And then what will it be with these improvements that you're proposing?
The existing, well, so speaking on that, so the level of service right now in existing conditions is obviously an F. So we, we're designing 20 years ahead, so in the no build condition, 2037, it's a real bad F. Under our design year, unfortunately, the overall is still an F, but there is a, a huge amount of delay reduction such that even if you compare to today, it's still a better F than it is today. So I believe also in one of the, the hours, I believe the PM is actually a level of service E, so I believe it's only the morning that's, we're still an F, but unfortunately, it's a much better F to take.
I'm sorry. From the teacher. I'm a school teacher, so you got to forgive me. And we're going to go from an F to an F. An F, an F, isn't it?
In a, in a short, in a short term, yes, but there is a delay that's associated with it. The overall delay for the intersection under the, under the designed year, no bill, is over 200 seconds a delay, so that's average delay per vehicle. Under the proposed condition, I believe we cut that down to about 80 seconds.
Just trying to imagine describing that to a parent, but thank you.
It's not so much getting a 10 on a test as opposed to a 55 on a test, but it, it is real measurable delays from base on our statistics analysis. And I guess I can follow up if-
Maybe just one follow-up. What would we have to do to improve to a D?
And actually, that's exactly what I was going to try to say. In order to really get the F to something of a E or a D or even better, we really need to add capacity, and what I mean by that is adding more additional turn links or links in general. As you are well aware, at this intersection, we have buildings that are right at the corners, obviously they can't go. We have the railroad tracks on the other side, which obviously they can't go. This bridge was recently constructed not that long ago, so we're actually proposing to restripe the bridge, get the link configuration that we have, so we don't have to reconstruct that bridge. The train platform is this little rectangle, I'm not sure if you can see it, but that's the existing train platform, so any impact to that, that's going to impact the track, so we want to avoid that, so make sure we get the project into construction. And then in this corner, there's a large retaining wall that drops down to the parking lot, so again, any impacts to that wall, it's going to be big bucks. It's going to cost a lot of money just to do that. And as I mentioned, the two corner, two corners have the building. So we're really limited by the site constraints, and in order to really get what we want, we have to get rid of some of those, which I don't think is, is a feasible option. So that's why we're kind of sort of stuck and do the best we can with the link configurations and the timing improvements that we can do.
So here, back to the letter grades. Level of service, we're going from level, level of service C to a level of service B in the AM, and it's remaining a C in the PM.
Just a question on, on the intersection there at 38 and Lowell Street. As I recall, a number of years ago, there was some work done to make it easier for trucks that are trying to take a left coming off Lowell to get onto 38 into what was the ExpideX building, make it easier for them to, to do that. Are there any, and I don't, I don't know to what degree that's been helpful, but are there any improvements, further improvements to that that would make it easier for trucks trying to take a left off of Lowell to go south on 38?
We're not particularly widening in that area. We may, I believe we, we took a look at truck turning templates, basically making this movement?
Sure. So basically, the, you know, the turning movements here, the shoulder requirements are per Mass DOT's requirement, 5 foot, so in order to get funding through the state, through federal, we have to meet their standards, if you will, to, to, to go forward with that, and that's why the Eastmans and the property takings at this intersection that Paul's talking about became necessary. And this was discussed with Mass DOT and what they want to do. Some of their reasoning behind it is, while we're spending all this money on this one project, let's have the whole entire roadway be consistent throughout. Let's not come back here, because it's not going to come back here to this intersection again for a very long time, so let's do it right through this at this point. So back to your question about turning movements, these were basically designed from 2007 when it was constructed, so all those happened, evaluated, and accommodate truck movements today, I guess.
If you remember, we took some land from the gas station, then we actually, roadway was more going this way, but we changed the roadway this way. Then we negotiated with the gas station, and we obtained some land in here. So turning movement or the intersection geometry, none of them weren't issue. Every, you know, everything was functioning properly at this intersection. Only issue was, at that time, Mass DOT's standard was to provide a minimum of 4-foot shoulders at that time. So now, they changed requirements from 4-foot shoulders, which we provided before, they changed to 5-foot shoulders. So only thing we're doing at this location is increasing the shoulder width from 4-foot wide to 5-foot wide. That's the only change, and that was actually, we actually initially- That's the only change, and that was actually, we actually initially, we were actually counting on not to do anything at this intersection. However, when we met with Mastioti, Mastioti specifically requested they would like five-foot shoulders at this intersection, continue. So that's the only reason we are redoing this intersection, just to get clarification.
The next intersection we're looking at is here at Cross Street and Route 38, currently, and Butters Row. Currently, this is an unsignalized intersection. As you can see here, Cross Street comes into Route 38 at a pretty severe skew, so this creates some issues with sight distance. People wanting to make a turn off of Cross Street have to really turn their heads to take a look at oncoming traffic. Again, one lane in each direction throughout this stretch, and you can see Butters Row is offset from Cross Street. Ideally, you want these to line up. So, under the proposed condition here, you can see we're significantly realigning Butters Row. This is the original Butters Row here, and now we're doing this. So we're coming in at more of a 90-degree angle to Route 38, and we're also slightly realigning Cross Street so that these both can line up. What we're also doing is providing ADA accommodations, wheelchair ramps, crosswalks. As Wing had mentioned before, one of the important points we wanted to incorporate in our design was providing pedestrian connectivity via sidewalks from Yentl Farms, which is around here, south to the Dog Park. Currently, we're proposing sidewalk in this stretch only up until the emergency driveway at Yentl Farm. And the reason for that is because we were made aware that it was a berm that was, an earth berm that was constructed here in order for patrons to view whatever ballgame was happening at the park. We're also providing a left turn lane here, again, to get those left turn movements out of the way, allow traffic to process more efficiently through the intersection. Regarding the sidewalk to the Dog Park from Yentl Farms, to the Dog Park from Yentl Farms, we'll be providing adequate sign, just letting pedestrians know that's the route to take if they want to make it to the Dog Park. They'd have to cross here and make their way to the Dog Park.
Can you go back?
I was part of the Yentl Farm Development Committee, and that was one of my things, was connecting the two parks. But I worked in Milford for 17 years. They have three major roadways with stop signs for pedestrians to go on the walkway that they have in town. It's part of the big walkway down in that part of the state, goes into Hopkinton and other towns. Two of them are on state highways, where someone walks into the pedestrian walkway, just walks into it, it stops the traffic on Route 16 and 109, and Diller Ave, which are very busy roads in Milford. I would like to see where the walkway is down the field, one of those signal stops signs for people that are walking the park down on 38. Is that something that we can look at?
Are you referring to a crossing further in this direction?
Because your sidewalks are on the other side of the street to the park. That's what I would like to possibly see. And the state knows that they're there in Milford, I don't know what other towns are in, but, because I drove that area really very frequently, it's something that I would like for us to at least look at, instead of connecting it where it is now on the corner of Cross Street and 38.
Right. Typically, you want to provide your crosswalks at intersections, because that's the safest situation. We did actually look at potentially providing a crosswalk here. Unfortunately, we're inhibited by these sight lines coming over, there's a crest curve, a vertical curve over here, that makes it quite dangerous to provide a mid-block crossing.
While we were talking to you guys at Yentl Farm, and I just went to the park the other day, and I had to take that left, and I took that left with praying that there wasn't a car coming from Woburn because of that crest. Are you fixing that crest?
We're looking at flattening that out.
Because it's very dangerous. Someone else had mentioned that in the several meetings that we had, and I'd never really taken that turn, but just last week, I took that left, and I know what they were talking about, and that's, it's going to be dangerous for everyone in that neighborhood, and everyone that uses Butters Row and use that, it's got to be looked at, and I'm hoping that that happens.
The mid-block crossing here?
Not only that, but...
And reduce the profile, sure.
Reduce, because it is dangerous.
Of course, yeah. We'll definitely take that into account.
I do agree with Ed, especially if your crosswalk is there and it's not leveled off a bit, you're still going to have that incline with people going across not seeing a car coming. Are those sidewalks on the opposite side of the street all the way down?
Here?
Yeah. That's orange, right? So that's all sidewalk as well?
Right.
Even off to the left?
Yes.
Okay.
All orange is sidewalk.
So, if I may, I'm sure you're aware, the town is looking into the possibility of replacing a bridge in that area. Would this have any impact on that? Would the town, would this make any more complex for the town than it already is, the situation with the bridge?
I think we're designing in anticipation of it. We're extending our sidewalks down this far, not taking it any further, knowing that there's a potential that this would have to get reconstructed. I believe the town's looking at a two-lane bridge that's going to be proposed.
With sidewalks?
So right now, we just, you know, basically, we're providing two lanes, one in each direction, but then we narrow down to just to meet the one lane.
What was the grade again? You said you were going from C to B and C to C in the evening, is that?
That was the other...
What's the grade on this one?
Oh, so the grade on this one, so in the AM, we're going from a level of service F for the side streets to a level of service C for the overall intersection.
F to C? Now we're talking.
So with...
That's passing grade.
With this, with this moving on the Butters Row Bridge, are you going to put this all together when the project starts? Are there going to be two separate projects?
There are going to be two separate projects coordinated, but one is through state funding, with federal money, the bridge has to be done by state funding. So it's strictly state funds.
For the bridge?
But we are going to attempt, give it our best shot, try to coordinate it.
The way it won't be as long to be built in the future if we're doing this now to wait for the second phase of the bridge. If it can all be done at the same, more or less the same timeline, then we're completing it quicker.
Starting, starting with replacing the bridge down at Towne Park, one of the other areas in 38.
I was going to bring that up.
So we're trying to coordinate the three projects together.
Because will that, and I don't mean to go, you know, that bridge over, heading towards Towne Park, will that have sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, on both sides?
That I don't know, it's a different design company.
Okay.
And Mike, I don't see it in the presentation here, but I assume at some point you guys talked timeline?
Well, we are already coordinating with the design firm who's designing the bridge. So whatever we propose on sidewalk and roadway configuration, they're going to carry into their design. So we are already coordinating with that.
So that'd be a whole bridge, is that what we're talking about over there as well? So that's going to come down and...
Yes.
It's a separate project, separate timeline, but that is coming down the road, it will be coordinated with Cross.
I just want to, I don't want me to cut Paul off, I was just going to explain a couple more of the things. This being a signalized intersection, it would actually be the safest place for pedestrians to cross in terms of crosswalks, so even though we might not getting the mid-block here due to sight distance issues that Paul indicated, this would be the best, safest location for any crossing.
I'm asking for signals, light signals down at the park, and stop signs, stoplights and everything. I mean, it's doable, it certainly is, and I knew you were going, I don't know about sight lines, but this intersection and the lights down there, but on the other side of the field towards the Woburn line, is the same distance that's in Milford, at least two different intersections.
We can take a look at that, but certainly that's something that we would coordinate with Mastioti on.
I mean, I would love to see it, as long as everyone else in town likes it, but the park is being utilized great with walkers, and if we can connect it to another town piece of property with the trails and everything, that'd be awesome.
Well, to Ed's point, the sidewalk ends, you said, indicate at the emergency driveway, right?
That's right.
Presumably, if they walk to the end of that sidewalk, they have to cross the street.
Well, so, we wanted to have some signage as part of this project, so that any pedestrians who's coming down who wishes to get to the Dog Park, they won't have to walk down to Yentl Farm knowing, oh, the sidewalk ends and then sort of cross there or walk back, so that they would have some advance notification, so that if they want to just get to the Dog Park, they can stay on the west side and head down. We would definitely want to accommodate the town as much as possible, but we also need to consider the safety for the pedestrians. You know, I'm not sure what kind of lights are out there, certainly there are rectangular, rapid flashing beacon ones out there. There are other kinds where it's a false signal, but sometimes those are a little harder to get because you have to meet the warrants, you have to meet certain pedestrian crossing requirements. So all those elements we are taking into...
I mean, if there's a reason why we can't, there's a reason, because right now, if someone's walking the park at the emergency exit, and that's what I'm talking about, putting the crosswalk to the other side of the street, they have to walk up to Cross Street and then cross up that crosswalk there, and then back down. I mean, I don't think people are going to have a problem with that, but, what?
We know what's going to happen.
They're not going to do that. They're going to cross the street, especially with the sidewalk built across the street. Just a suggestion, just a, I've mentioned this, and...
I'd just like to make a point, I understand what Ed is saying, but the whole idea of putting the Dog Park down there was to keep it separate from Yentl's Farm. I don't see people parking at Yentl's Farm, taking their dog across the street, walking all the way down. I think the last thing we want to do is put another set of traffic lights down by the Dog Park. And once again, I've been saying it, we're just going to move traffic quickly from here to here, and that's it. We need to really move the traffic a little bit along. It makes all sense in the world, safety reasons, putting those crosswalks at an intersection. Most cities and towns, that's what they do. And now people talked about the two-lane bridge, so folks can go over in a safe manner and not take their cars, trying to make pedestrian-friendly, you know, smart development, you know?
Lastly, I just want to reiterate or explain a little bit further in clarification. Because currently, this is an unsignalized intersection, so the F is really placed emphasis on the side streets, they're the only ones that gets measured, because the through movements will always get the continuous through, so they're not, their movement isn't restricted. So, when Paul was talking about level of service C, that's taken into the entire consideration and all the lakes as an overall, so just want to clarify that.
Just to give you a brief overview of some of the other alternatives we were looking at, here in the top-left corner, we have a less dramatic realignment of Butters Row and Cross Street. However, this was not ideal since the left turn lanes coming out of Butters and Cross Street would be conflicting with one another, and you'd need that split phasing traffic signal that we discussed earlier, that wouldn't be that efficient. Here in the top-right corner, we have another alternative, these are a little hard to see, but where we're providing this, it's called a pork chop island in the middle of the intersection. So the idea there was to channelize the right turn movements coming out of Cross Street here. However, this resulted in quite a bit more property impacts. It also wasn't exactly pedestrian-friendly, since they kind of have to cross twice. Also, you know, you're creating a situation where sometimes maybe someone's going to get confused and take a left up this wrong way, so that one was thrown out. Now we're looking at this bottom-left corner, now we have a pretty dramatic change in the alignment of Butters Row. However, this basically provides the same outcome as our preferred alternatives, except you've got a ton more impacts here to wetlands and properties. So again, that one was disregarded. Here you have a roundabout option, and with any roundabout, you're going to require a lot of real estate, and that's the same situation here. I mean, we have more impacts than any of the other alternatives to both wetlands and properties. So now we're approaching the southern limit of the project. Here we have the Old Main Street intersection with Route 38. What we found was there were some pretty significant crash, some pretty significant crash history at this southern location, or this northern location. We're attributing this to this awkward intersection here. Old Main Street intersects Route 38 at this severe skew angle. You also have Cook Avenue intersection, which is just north of that, and then there's also the driveway to this industrial park up here. So this kind of created a perfect storm for a dangerous situation, not to mention the sharp curve coming around here limiting sight distance. What we have here at the southern limit is...
The gas station?
And there's just a whole lot of open wide pavement. So we saw some opportunities to provide some improvements here. And this is what we came up with. So, looking at the northern end, what we're doing is realigning Old Main Street to come into Route 38 at more of a 90-degree perpendicular angle. Again, that helps improve sight lines now, you know, if someone's taking a turn onto Route 38, they don't have to turn their neck so much. Here we have Cook Avenue, again, by doing that, we're providing more separation between this intersection and that intersection, and just to the north of that, again, is that driveway. We're hoping to work with the town and the property owner to see if there's something that we can do with that driveway, possibly shift it a little further, or since they have another access, a little further north, possibly closing it, but again, we'd like to work with them on that. Here at the southern limit of work, we are providing a more defined entrance to Old Main Street, or a more defined intersection, again, coming in at this 90-degree angle. What this now gives us is an opportunity to provide some landscaping in this area. Now all that wide-open pavement can be converted to green space. And if you'll notice, there's also a crosswalk over here. So the reason we put this here is, first of all, it's a little safer being at the intersection, but also, once you get into Woburn, there's sidewalk on both sides of the road, so we want to provide some connectivity heading into Woburn. So now we have sidewalks on both sides, heading south.
Hey Paul, what's the cleared area in the dead center? Is that utility easement? Where the compass is, no, in the dead center of the graphic?
This is Edison, it's an electrical company.
Electrical wires?
The wires.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, I have a question. Are you looking at Eam Street, when they're coming out of there as well, because it's difficult, you know, taking a left and looking to the right? Is that, I don't see that on here.
We didn't have a slide for that, but that, we were making some minor improvements there, where we're realigning Eam Street slightly to come again into Route 38 at more of a 90-degree angle.
Okay, because that's a difficult, left and right, coming out of that street.
Also in that area, I think it's the 800s of Main Street, how about the residents there, what's the impact on those houses? Between these two slides, it's not represented in the slide, but that's where the majority of the homes in this area are, so what's the impact to them?
Just south of Dog Park, actually, there aren't going to be many impacts at all. That's one reason we chose that side of the road for our sidewalk, as opposed to the other side, because the other side was going to create some more wetland impacts, more property impacts. So, essentially, we don't have a whole ton of impacts.
Greg's bringing up a good point.
No right-of-way acquisitions.
Where's the location of the Dog Park? Can you just show us where the location of the Dog Park is?
The Dog Park, unfortunately, it's not on the slide here, but on this graphic here, it's just...
Just southwards.
I'm talking about the Dog Park to here, this slide.
Yeah.
That's where everybody lives. I think it's the 800s, I'm not sure.
You're going, I'm sorry, you said you're going all the way to the Woburn line, correct? So we're talking, what I think, what I was trying to say is across Eam Street, that's where the most of the homes are, right across the street, just a little bit ways, right before Clutch Membrane, going towards Woburn, that's where most of the homes are. So you're talking, we are on Eam Street, if you take a look at the right, maybe about 200 yards, from that point, going that way to Woburn line, that's where most of the homes, that's what I think what we're referring to, those homes.
So to answer your questions, this little green patch here on this map is the Dog Park, and just next to the orange on the other side of that is Route 38. So, one reason we're putting a sidewalk on that side is, hey, there are a lot more residents on that side, so providing a sidewalk on that side will provide an access for all those residents to Dog Park, or up north to 62, they want it to, or to Yentl Farm if they want it to. So that's why we picked that side. And also, that side has the least amount of utility pulse, which is another consideration that we have, because we don't want to remove all of those overhead utility, because it's going to cost a lot of money as well, so. And again, there are no right-of-way acquisitions along the stretch to build a sidewalk in front of those properties. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we're keeping them in mind, certainly they'll be, uh, not to say that the businesses won't be impacted, but those are people who actually live right there. I mean, not to, the project is gonna disturb them for however long it takes, but to have to give up some of their front yard too would be a tough, uh, tough sell.
There's no land takings down.
There's none? Okay.
Only up at, uh, where we went on to Wall Street to do some minor takings there and then up at 62 and stuff.
It's good to hear.
Actually, to answer one of your other questions about Eam Street, was we're also flattening the curve. If you were looking right out of Eam Street, we're also flattening that curve so that we can help increase the site distance if you're pulling out of, uh, Eam Street as well. So that's another benefit that we're including in this project.
That's a tough turn, though.
So, on to our next steps. So the reason we're here is to consider the town's feedback. Um, we'd like to receive your comments, possibly incorporate them into our design. Um, as I mentioned before, we'd like to meet with Mass DOT regarding the impacts to that railroad south of Route 62. Um, so we're in the process of scheduling a meeting for that. Um, we'd also like to finalize our 25% design to Mass DOT, which should be happening soon, and that's an important step to, uh, acquiring, uh, tip funding. Then it becomes according to the MPO, it's a real project, once you get your 25% in. And as I mentioned, the MPO, MPO is then to assign a tip year for the project, Transportation Improvement Program funds. And again, final design funded by Mass DOT, that's what we're, we're expecting here, so that's why we're going through the Mass DOT process and designing to their, their specifications and standards. So with that, I'll open the floor to any questions, comments?
Uh, thank you, Paul, and I thank you all, uh, for being here tonight. Um, I think we've been doing Q and A all along, but we certainly want to continue that process. Uh, my, my only question that I can conceive of right now before we, I go to my colleagues is timelines, and I don't know, maybe you said it and I just didn't capture it, but I know that there's a, a process for submitting documentation, but I'm interested to know, you know, when, are we looking at months, years, or somewhere in between?
Um, so the 25% design, uh, what we'd like to do is really meet with Mass DOT and the MBTA to go over all those right-of-way acquisition at the 62, make sure we're all on the same page before we submit the 25% design so that we're not taking a step backwards, we're gonna be taking steps forward. So hopefully that'll happen sometime in the September, um, hopefully in August, but hopefully no later than September, and then we're gonna be submitting, uh, the 25% design shortly after that. Um, so we're looking this year, definitely before the end of this year, to submit the 25. Um, after that happens, the project is gonna, going to be under review by Mass DOT. Typically, they have 120 days review period, uh, for a project like this, um, in which point then, um, we'll, we'll resolve some comments with them and then hopefully move the project along to the Design Public Hearing, hopefully in the spring of 2018. Um, so that will be some brief timeline there, and then after that, um, once the 25 is approved, we will proceed on to the 75% design, um, which for a project like this could take a good nine, 10 months. Um, and then, uh, really it depends on where the tip year is being assigned, to be honest with you, after that. Um, uh, every, you know, uh, there are a lot of towns, communities, projects committing, competing for a pot of money, so the MPO usually is the ones who decides where the project ranks in terms of what year it gets funded. Um, so really it kind of, um, depends on that, to be honest with you, so I can't really talk more beyond that, unfortunately.
Sorry, just capturing some notes. Thank you for that. Uh, so why don't I, uh, to see if there's any last, uh, comments or questions, and, uh, yes, certainly Mr. McCoy, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Uh, you said you want to improve the water in the sewer line, but I assume from the Shell Station to the Woburn line, obviously there's a, a water line. Is there a complete sewer line? Are we extending a sewer or is there already a sewer existing?
Just the small piece of sewer running from Butters Row to, uh, intersect from Point 11.
So the only sewer we have right now and existing is from the, well, at the Shell Station to the Butters Row, that's it?
Yeah.
So you're looking to continue the sewer from Butters Row?
Without it, it's being replaced.
All right, so you're just replacing the sewer, so you're not extending the sewer?
Right. And the water main only goes from 62 to Eam Street. Now, by, uh, the problem's been with quitting a few years ago, size over to 16-inch main to connect to the, uh, Woburn Street.
I'm just, uh, uh, thank you, Mike. I'm just curious, you said, obviously we're above the state norm on Route 38, uh, you know, the crash, uh, automobile, uh, truck accidents. Is there any particular area along the Route 38, for example, near the intersection, at the Shell Station or Butters Row, or even like everyone's talking about at Eam Street? It's all difficult. Is there any particular area that it's worse?
Um, I think, uh, the higher crashes were at the 62, um, the Cross Street and the 129, those were the majority. Um, after that, Cross Street heading south, uh, the traffic crashes, um, tend to be less along the corridor, so majority is up north where the commercial areas and major intersections.
And I'm just curious, out of curiosity, who, uh, who approaches who? Did it, did the town approach DOT or did the DOT approach the town about this is what they wanted to do? I'm just curious.
We, we approached DOT. It's a roadway, I'm sure, we'll be doing, beautifying it, taking care of some of these problems that were popping up, you know, the, next to the train tracks, the, uh, usually find a firestone. Uh, Yentl Farms was mainly designed at the time, trying to kind of throw those up, getting sidewalks in, getting some trees and getting that forward to water main. We, probably made the rich and valuable, but I make the first part of it.
I just wanna say that's job well done, Mike. That's really glad to hear that, the town proactive, uh, reaching out to the state because obviously we want to get some of those dollars too.
To put the, uh, the Ted Crips on him, I just, confident.
All right, uh, yeah, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just, I just want to reiterate the fact that I would like to connect Yentl Park to the trails down at Town Park. Um, that's the biggest thing. I've known about this since, um, we met with you guys at Yentl Properties. Um, and, and really looking at that, that hill that's on Cross Street and 38, um, that hill is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kyra?
I'm, I'm, I think I'm all set. Maybe just one question regarding, follow-up to Mr. McCoy's question about the sewer and water. Was there any, um, thought about extending it all the way down, since, since as you say, the road's gonna be open anyways and, and dug up? Better to do it now than, than later.
Being, uh, paying the cost of MassDOT, well, the cost will be borne by the town.
Betterment?
Betterment, however, of the town sides to do it, uh, several million dollars to do a project of that size, and I'm just not sure that.
I didn't know if MassDOT, if that was part of the, but it's.
It always runs across my mind, but, um, just not sure it needs there. With all that industry area, yes, we can, just, uh, the extra decisions.
I think most of my, uh, questions were answered, just, uh, I gotta go back to the report card there. I missed a grade on the last, uh, poor slide there. I missed a grade on what's our, what's the current grade and what are we gonna go to over by Old Main Street?
Old Main.
What's the improvement there?
Uh, unfortunately, I actually don't have that, uh, off the top of my head here. Um, the volumes here are. The volumes here are, are very small, and, uh, we, this was actually not part of our, um, traffic counting program because of the, the small volume of traffic here, so, um, we don't expect that to be, uh, any, any significant issues at all, um, in terms of traffic operations.
All right, uh, I'm also pleased to see that there's not gonna be any properties, uh, affected by this, uh, by taking any land. You mentioned the cost is for Mass DOT. Going back to the MBTA, you're gonna, you're gonna, when you have discussions with them, you'll talk about where they're gonna access. I mean, I love the idea of beautifying that area, you know, across from, uh, what's at the, uh, old D and D lock there, but, uh, you know, the trucks do go in and out of there, so they're presumably gonna need a place to go in and out. It's fine by me if it's down at Woburn, but, uh, I don't think that's gonna happen. And then, uh, my last question is for Mike. Uh, you mentioned at the very beginning of this, uh, possibility of a future public forum?
Yes, uh, now starts protocol is once they get the 25 that's in design, hopefully over, uh, six months or so, they'll hold the public there.
So that is.
Uh, it's started, they've been done with the board, so.
Okay. And residents would have a chance to speak then to?
We advertise and, and books that, and, uh, so.
Will the residents be notified?
Yeah, I'm sure we'll, uh, notify all the bodies in minimum, and they'll be public online and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just, I have a question.
You said there wouldn't be any land takings. We are looking at some land takings, like I said earlier, 62, uh.
No residential land taken?
East side, no residential.
But obviously those businesses would be notified and they're in agreement?
We haven't got to that stage yet because this is just on paper, but once it's not a project, it's a whole written agreement, we'll, we'll reach out to them and then the folks are at the, uh, 29, uh, intersection.
Thank you.
Mike, just to double back on the, on the, um, Town Park Bridge. Now, when all this starts its construction, that Town Park Bridge, which will now incorporate sidewalks, that will all be part of this?
Yes.
Because they're not showing any of that on, on this presentation.
Right, uh, there's another design thing that MassDOT tried to do that, uh, close company is in coordination with them, so everything will line up, sidewalks and with that, you know?
Okay.
Uh, that is already scheduled, I believe, for 2022.
And how is that gonna work with the timing of, of this? I, I mean, is that bridge gonna be done, is that bridge gonna be done before?
When you're done, all.
Right. That bridge may be done before then, is what we're saying.
Very well.
Okay.
One last thing, I promise. You did say 60% in, uh, increase in, uh, decrease in traffic delays, right? We got you on video there.
Yes.
Up to 60%, all right.
Uh, I just want to go back and clarify the right-of-way taking, and I might mention 62, we have several of the commercial properties, but there is one residential property, it's sort of in between everything that, um, again, as Paul mentioned during his presentation, because we're trying to wind this left turn lane at 62, um, we are encroaching it into that property by the width of the sidewalk. Um, so just want to clarify that. There are no residential takings south of the dog park, um, all the way down to the Woburn Town Line, so I just want to make sure, clarify that.
So that is a taken?
Yes, in this case.
Not residential.
No, there's a residence that lives across that.
Lynette's Limo one.
So White House next to Lynette's Limo.
It's, uh, this is the, uh, limo parking lot, the limousine parking lot, so it's across from that, it's a.
It's the one house there.
It's a one-house residential, um.
Have they been notified?
No, we have not yet, so.
Again, this is just contact.
If this is the only house, I think it's kind of lousy not to retail town.
There are several properties, actually, that's on our list that we want to talk to, and this is actually one of them, so.
That's the same. There's actually also several properties. Yeah. Well, the sooner you can reach out to them, the better. Thank you.
Anything else from up here? Very well. Thank you, folks all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We look forward to you keeping us apprised of progress as you make it. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike. Was there anything else?
Thanks, Mike.
No.
Did you want to do the button there?
Oh, yeah, right, so.
You wanted to move that up?
Yeah. What is wrong? Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, so.
Number seven?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that. It's number seven, right. So that concludes our scheduled appointments, which would typically run us into our communications. Um, but, uh, in the agenda, I'm going to bump ahead forward with the, uh, with the approval of my colleagues here at the board to item number seven, which is a board to consider taking a formal vote to request depart, a Mass Department of Transportation to replace Butters Row Bridge. Uh, and the reason I'm bumping that up in the, uh, agenda is because, uh, Co. here from Green International, uh, has, has played a role and will play a role in that, and, uh, has offered to stick around through that conversation in case there's an opportunity for questions, so, thank you, sir. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, number 11 is here as well, just so I can, in fairness to, she's here.
Oh, okay, so, well. Shall we, maybe we, um, I was just thinking something through, so Greg, to your point, um.
I noticed the gentleman are gonna stick around. I noticed that there's, the petitioner for number 11 is also here in attendance. I don't know, if we're gonna bump up one, we might as well bump up two.
I, I'm guessing, and I could be wrong, but I'm guessing that there might be discussion around number seven, um, and we can probably, uh, get through number 11 fairly quickly. I don't know, how do you feel about that? Um, I, so, if we're gonna bump up one, to Greg's point, I think it might make sense, um, rather than asking the petitioner, uh, under, uh, board to consider the request of Renee Marku, um, if you guys are, are in agreement, I'd like to take up number 11, uh, so that she can elect to stay and listen to the rest of the, the presentation and the rest of the conversation, but, um, that, that might get us, uh, get us through that a little quicker, so. Uh, that, but I would need you guys to feel comfortable and, and approve that motion. No, no objection to doing 11 right now?
No, it's fine.
Um, so thank you for that. Uh, so, uh, number 11 on our, uh, board to consider is the request of Renee Marku, Executive Director of Brady's Foundation Incorporated, to conduct a 5K walk or run on Sunday, August 27th, from 8:00 to 3:00. Uh, Jeff, I'll ask you to maybe summarize whatever information you have on this, uh, this issue?
Uh, yes, the request was made, uh, to, uh, schedule this event for the 27th of October from 8:00 AM until 3:00 PM. Uh, the plan would be for signups, uh, for the, uh, run-walk at 8:00 AM with the race starting approximately around 9:30. Expectation is that the event would conclude around, uh, 11:30. And in addition, uh, the request has been made, uh, to, uh, allow for use of the Town Park, I'm sorry, the Town Common, uh, with some activities for kids to go on, uh, during the remaining period from 11:30 until about 2:00, and then the expectation would be, uh, the breakdown, if you will, would take place between 2:00 and 3:00. Uh, the proposed route of this run-walk is, uh, the same as the other 5Ks that have been done, uh, in the past, which would be, uh, starting from the Common, uh, down Federal Street and then circling, uh, back, uh, up Wildwood and, uh, finishing at the Common.
Thank you. Uh, do you have recommendations or any conflicts that we're aware of?
Uh, not aware of any conflicts. I've, uh, spoken with the police chief, uh, and, uh, he does not have any specific concerns.
Uh, Ms. Marku, I presume that's you. Uh, do you have any comments you'd like to make or any, uh, any statement or request or any, anything else formal?
Just that I'm grateful that you're considering it for the town. And I've been from Wilmington my whole life, and my foundation's based out of this town, so I would really appreciate it. The whole group of us would really appreciate if this would be approved.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so, uh, with, unless there's other questions from the board, uh, I would, uh, had welcome a motion.
Move to grant the request.
That motion is made and seconded, is there discussion? I see none, all in favor of granting this request? It seems unanimous, Ms. Marku. Congratulations, and I wish you well. Good luck.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
So thank you for your indulgence in moving that around, uh, and again, uh, if I could, uh, we're going to, is there objection from anyone here about moving to item number seven on our agenda? Uh, to avail ourselves of, uh, Mr. Ishikura's presence, so thank you. our agenda, to avail ourselves of Mr. Ishikura's presence? So, thank you. Number seven on our agenda is the board to consider taking a formal vote to request Massachusetts Department of Transportation to replace the Butters Row Bridge. So Jeff, if I could ask you to sort of update us as to the rationale and the reason why we're taking this up this evening?
Yes, if you recall, the board brought this up on June twelfth at a meeting over at the middle school. It was clear at the time that the board's intention was in favor of replacing the existing bridge with a two-lane bridge with sidewalks. There was no formal vote at that meeting that was taken. I think the question may have even been raised as to whether one was needed, and it, at the time, did not appear necessary. But in conversations that Mike Woods has had with representatives from Mass. DOT, it appears that it would be advisable to have such a vote. Clearly, as was stated previously, Mass. DOT wants to be very clear that the local elected officials are behind such a project, and also that the legislative delegation is behind such a project. So, the proposal this evening is for the board to authorize, essentially formalize, the intentions of your meeting of the twelfth via a letter that would go to Mass. dot in our legislative delegation.
Thank you, Jeff. I was, I probably should have pursued maybe a little bit more aggressively that evening that we took that up at the middle school auditorium. It didn't occur to me, I guess, then, that it would be as important to have a formal vote and a formal, I guess, communication on behalf or from the Board of Selectmen to this effect. So, I asked Jeff, in and above just taking the vote, I thought it might add a little cachet, for lack of a better word, or a little bit more extra communication import by having a document that if, presuming we vote in the affirmative this evening, a document that we could sign and actually send into Mass. DOT to really affirm that we are, in fact, positively in favor of expanding the bridge. So.
Let me put that into a form of a motion, that we will sign this favorable letter for Butters Row Bridge, to be a brand-new bridge with the sidewalks, as is stated in the letter.
I'd like to make a second, and I do support it, but little discussion. And I'll just be quick on it. I mean, I know we went to the meeting, the hearing at the middle school, and the message is loud and clear. The residents want a two-lane bridge, and I will support that for the residents. For safety, as I've always done, support residents. This is what I believe is going to happen by making Butters Row into a two-lane bridge, and say this five times fast. By doing that, it will expedite the access road to ExpideX. I firmly believe that by doing it, but I'm going to support the two-lane bridge, and I just, with three-hundred-and-sixty-six feet of frontage on Butters Row where ExpideX is, that's a two-lane bridge, you know, but I'm going to support that, because definitely we, it's an issue out there. That bridge definitely has to be replaced.
I appreciate your comments. At the beginning of those comments, did I understand you to have to be seconding Mr. Kyra's?
Yes, absolutely. Second if it's discussion. I just wanted to get that out there, that's all.
Thank you. I accept your second. I also accept those comments as part of discussion, and we're still under discussion if there's any more to be had. I see no further discussion other than Mr. McCoy's comments. All in favor? It is unanimous. So if I could ask you gentlemen to hang at the end, or are you going to have to send that down now?
Send it down.
Very good. Let's do it live. Thank you. So I guess there's no further questions. Thank you, guys, for hanging out. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Paul.
Do you know how many intersections we have that are already Fs? No. I'm just curious. I know, I have a couple of those, just, thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. So, we'll double back to our regular, number five, we're going to cover communications now. As soon as Jeff has a moment to organize, we'll jump in with our first number of communications.
First under Communications is an email from Paul Rogiro. This is in response to a communication I had with him about the prospect of creating a naming policy. If you recall, a few meetings ago, there was a discussion about concerns that had been expressed at the time when the proposal for, to name the gym, the Cushing Gym, the school committee had expressed some concern that there was no particular vetting process for that naming. So I had put together a draft memo that outlined a possible approach. The request was to forward that to the school committee and have them take a look at it. So this response back from the school committee essentially indicates that they're in favor of the model, if you will, that's proposed, and suggested just a couple of additions, specifically that with respect to criteria being considered, that the following be added: the degree to which the individual or organization has provided effective and dedicated service to or on behalf of the students of the Wilmington Public Schools, the degree to which individuals or organizations have made a significant contribution, financial or otherwise, to the Wilmington Public Schools. And then the other point that they suggest is that the criteria that would be used to evaluate any proposed naming have some kind of a ranking, and they reference a score of one to four. So this is what has come back from the school committee.
So I'll jump in here briefly. You gentlemen may recall, this was on an agenda and a discussion topic for a previous Board of Selectmen meeting. So some of this is, the dates are kind of overlapping. I, at the end of that meeting, when we discussed it, it seemed clear, and I took away from that meeting, that perhaps the process that was spelled out, that Jeff had gone through to try to give us a template for a subcommittee, it seemed like there was an extra layer of bureaucracy, and maybe we were overcomplicating the process. And so I had taken, I had suggested that I would be in contact with the Chair of the School Committee and sort of see if there was a simpler way to achieve the same results. The idea being, we wanted to create a collaborative type of working model that would accommodate the interests of all parties involved. And frankly, just, there already is a process. I think, Mr. Kyra, you had astutely indicated that the process exists today, that any resident who wishes to have a town property named after an individual can secure, what is it, ten signatures and have it placed on the town warrant, the town meeting warrant, as a petition article. The circumstance, so that exists today, and I think it will always exist by virtue of it being part of the bylaws of the town. The circumstance where an individual requests that the Board of Selectmen put forth a name, not as a petition article, but as a Board of Selectmen-sponsored article, was really what I think precipitated, geez, what process ought we follow? And I think that the knee-jerk, nah, that's the wrong word to use, I think the common sense practice that Mr. Bjork agreed to in concept on the phone with me the other day, and said that he was going to re-articulate it to his committee when the time was, when they're at their next meeting. But generally, the common sense practice would simply be that if an individual approaches the Board of Selectmen through Jeff or any of us as members to name a piece of property, and let's just use the hypothetical, a piece of property, whether that be a room or an auditorium or anything, after an individual at one of our schools, that we, the Board of Selectmen, would ultimately, of course, have the authority to vote that into the town meeting warrant as an article. But, but, I, as the current Chair and any future Chair, would seek the endorsement or the recommendation from the school committee before really bringing that to the Board of Selectmen for review. So we want to get the school committee's recommendation of a proposed article. If it's not a school property, then, you know, if it was, I don't know, the public building's garage or something, we'd certainly want to have the same kind of recommendation from the Director of Public Buildings. And, you know, I'm creating hypotheticals here, but they're real. So the common sense approach, from my perspective, I think Jeff maybe agreed with me in concept on the phone, and certainly Steve Bjork, the Chair of the School Committee, seemed to agree that that would meet the need of that collaborative process to make sure that the, those that have a vested interest, that their interests are being reflected. So, rather than going through and creating a whole subcommittee and multiple layers of bureaucracy, I thought it was better to really just resort back to common sense, and hopefully that I and all future versions of this board will just resort again to common sense with that as the precedent. And I just wanted to put that before you, so that some of this can really just kind of go to sleep with the assumption that when the next proposal comes forth, we'll exercise that policy as the modus operandi. Suggestions, questions, comments, criticisms?
Well, I think, just as I mentioned it the last time we discussed it, I just didn't want to make it any more difficult for somebody who has good intentions, like I think the Cushing family did last time. So, I appreciate the common sense. I appreciate the school committee's attention to this, but, again, I think it's going to take care of itself going forward by the result of town meeting.
Okay. Everyone else okay with following that procedure?
All right.
Splendid. And so, continue then, Jeff?
Next is a memo from Valerie Gingrich to me with regard to laying out the process that has been taken and will be taken with respect to the global gas station proposal. And the reason that I requested that she provide this document to the board is to provide the board with, make sure the board is fully understanding the process that is being taken with respect to this project. This is, in many respects, not unlike other projects that come before the Board of Appeals or Planning Board for Site Plan Review. But in this particular case, as you know, each of the board members received twenty-six letters or comment letters, essentially the same letter signed by twenty-six different folks, raising concerns about this project. So I think it's, first of all, important to understand for, certainly the viewing audience, that the Board of Selectmen, at this stage in the process with this proposal, does not have any jurisdiction or authority to either approve or disapprove of this project. But just by way of outlining the, some of the specifics of this project, it's proposed to include ten fueling dispensary pumps, five islands in total, two pumps per island, sixty-two-hundred-square-foot canopy overhead, retail convenience store with a cafe, four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty square feet with an outside seating area. There's also a second freestanding building that is proposed, six-thousand-twenty-five square feet, which would be a Phase Two. The proponents do not have a specific proposed use for that property, but some of the things that have been mentioned are a bank, a general service restaurant, pharmacy, possible options there. The access, there would be two access points off of West Street and an entry-only point off of Lowell Street. Parking is proposed for fifty-four spaces, including the spaces for the fueling dispensers. The permitting process, the proponents have gone to the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals had recommended that the proponents go to the Planning Board for Site Plan Review, which they have also done. They attended a Planning Board meeting last week on the eleventh, and that meeting was continued to September fifth, which will allow the proponents time to address comments that were made and potentially revise the plans. Conservation Commission is expected to also hear this case with regard to a notice of intent. That would be in August, on August second, at least tentatively. I don't know if the specific date has been confirmed. And then Mass. DOT must issue an access permit to construct a curb cut on Lowell Street, off of Lowell Street to this property. So that is really the, an overview of what this project is all about. And as I say, it is going through the customary process that a project of this nature would go through. There have been a number of comments and questions. Paul Looney certainly has identified some questions with regard to stormwater, and as I understand it, those are being addressed by the proponents, and there are other questions, I'm sure, that will be raised during the process. So the town is treating this as it would any other proposal.
Jeff, thank you. I appreciate you bringing this to our, compiling this information and presenting that to us this evening. I felt it important, when we were creating the agenda for this evening, that, well, speaking selfishly, I'm getting a number of folks who are coming to me either live or by phone or email, asking me questions about the project. And, you know, I've had to diplomatically advise them that, you know, that we're not really involved from a jurisdictional standpoint. We don't have a vote, per se, on this project, and that it's going through the typical Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals process. But that said, I'm, you know, the fact that I'm getting these questions, I suspect you guys are too, and I know there's just ample amount of communication about this project on social media, and we've all seen the signs. So I felt that we, as public officials, ought to have a complete set of the information, and as much as is possible, avail ourselves of a full understanding of what the process has been thus far. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we are up to speed and we have the information, so that when we engage and have conversations with folks, hopefully we're having those conversations based on facts and, you know, not necessarily based on innuendo. I'm going to certainly offer everyone an opportunity to speak if they care to. One statement that I wanted to bring up about these multiple letters, I forget how many there were, twenty-two or three?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. There was a paragraph there, third or fourth down, it says, "Lastly, the process that has taken place to date has lacked the transparency and scrutiny that a project of this size requires, raising suspicions and concerns as to what may be happening behind the scenes to accommodate this large out-of-town corporation." I take exception to that comment. I, it is my belief, it is my heartfelt opinion, that this process, like all of these projects, is following the prescribed set of steps and sequences. The meetings that are being held are being held in the open. In many cases, they're being publicized and broadcast. So I just, I can understand and certainly appreciate someone creating an opinion that's negative of this or any project, but I'm very resistant to allow for someone to suggest that this is being done in a untransparent manner. This is as transparent as every project of this magnitude or any magnitude is being handled in Wilmington. So I just took exception to that one statement. I don't know if anyone else has more, any other questions or comments on that. Very well. Thank you.
Next is the correspondence that the Chair just referred to. It was an open letter to the editor Wilmington Town Crier. It's, I won't go into all the specifics, but the, it appears to be a form letter that was signed by twenty-six different individuals, expressed concerns about traffic, safety, congestion, lighting, and noise associated with the potential project that is being put forward by a global gas.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, and I highlighted that paragraph that you spoke of, because I was the Chairman of the Board of Appeals when this meeting started, and the hundred or so people that were packed into this room, I thought I was pretty fair and pretty honest with them, and told them my opinion, what was going to happen, and suggested that they go to the Planning Board. But to write a letter like they did here really upsets me, because there has been no lack of transparency that I can see. There was a social media brouhaha about the Town Committee of Developments, and someone heard about that, and it got publicized, and they're hiding behind our backs and everything. I don't think that's true at all. What I do want to say is the people that have got the signs out there, and everyone else that signed this letter, be respectful of the applicant. He has his rights, and that's what you have to do. And that's all I have to say, is because they are not being respectful of what's being said out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Love.
Mr. Chair, I would just also point out, with respect to this meeting that was noted as, I guess, perhaps being construed as not being transparent, the community development team, which is made up of the Building Inspector and Police and Fire, a number of department heads, meets routinely on projects of this nature and others to review with the applicant. The proposal gives the internal staff an opportunity to ask questions. That was what happened in this case, as it has in many other cases. And in fact, there were individuals who attended that meeting and observed it. So that is just a matter of course as to how we handle proposals that are brought forward.
Thank you.
Next, under correspondence is a letter from Margaret Hurley, who is from the Attorney General's Office. She writes to confirm that Article forty-nine, which sought to establish a moratorium on marijuana use through June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen, that article has been reviewed and approved by the Attorney General's Office. Next is a letter from, from me to Matthew Beaton, who is the Director of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. This addresses the Martins Landing proposal in North Reading. We had a meeting with staff to review the environmental notification form that was submitted as part of this, and the notice, there was a deadline for comments of July eleventh. This correspondence essentially identifies some of the questions or issues that we want to make sure are addressed, just by way of information. This proposal is a four-hundred-and-fifty-unit, over-fifty-five condominium development located This proposal is a four-hundred-and-fifty-unit, over-fifty-five condominium development located on Route sixty-two, right next to Edgewood Apartments. Some of the concerns or questions we have deal with traffic, most notably, one of the issues that, in terms of the traffic counts, it seems that the proponents may be suggesting that the traffic patterns being generated are based upon the retiree population, certainly any of us who are fifty-five and older aren't necessarily retired yet, and we expect that there will be traffic associated with people going to and from work and other activities. So that was one issue that we put forward, and also concerned about the impacts on several of the intersections on sixty-two, the one at Woburn, Woburn and Dover Street and sixty-two, as well as the two intersections to Interstate ninety-three, and then the intersection at High Street and Middle Sex Ave and Route sixty-two. Also, we wanna make sure that the Salem Street Well Field, which is about a thousand feet from this proposed development, is appropriately protected, and we noted that as well.
Just, I wanna restate, I think you said it at the beginning, but I wanna make it very, very crystal clear, that the entire project is based in North Rep.
Yes.
So we have, it's very close to Wilmington, but it's not, it's not a project within the town limits of our town.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, if you don't mind, I?
Unless I read it somewhere else, Jeff, I thought I read that there's, in North Reading, there's only one fire department. However, more than likely, it's not, I thought you stated that, it sounds like that we're gonna have to respond from Wilmington, a fire or an ambulance probably be the first ones there. Is that gonna happen?
Well, certainly, one of the concerns that we did express in this letter is the impact on emergency response. The longstanding practice as part of mutual aid has been that when instances, back when the J.T. Barry property was active, Wilmington Fire would respond. Since the Edgewood Apartments have been there, Wilmington Fire and EMS respond, so the expectation is that if something, if this project were to go forward through the mutual aid process, there would be an impact on Wilmington Fire and EMS.
I don't know how far we can go. Obviously, I'm off of mutual aid, but we talk about a substation in North Wilmington. What was it called, Metro, not Metro, what's the other, it's called the Edge or?
Edge.
Edgewood. Now you're looking, you have Edgewood, I don't know how many units they have, now there's another four-hundred-and-fifty units, you know, within probably one Tom Brady pass away, and we're gonna deal with it all, mostly, if you take a good look at it. I just would think that, I don't know if we're able, we're not getting any tax dollars. Obviously, in their scenarios, they're using as, our train station is probably for smart development as well. Meanwhile, we gotta respond, like I said, I'm off of mutual aid. Is there any way we can get any of those monies to the town? Because we're gonna be providing an important service to North Reading and those people who are gonna live there, and we don't get a benefit out of that.
Well, certainly, we're, the expectation is we will be having conversations with representatives from North Reading. In fact, the chairman and I will be talking to the, their town administrator and their board chair.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Just to, just to follow up, so really, what leverage do we have to protect the town's interest? Is it just a matter of us getting information regarding, you know, the groundwater and to make sure that what they're doing is not impacting that, or do we have any, do we get that information?
Yeah, I mean, I think the leverage is through the permitting agencies to make sure that they're aware and cognizant and consider the impacts on Wilmington, and, you know, whether it's requiring in terms of mitigation that work be done to address those intersections and work be done to limit the exposure to the town's drinking water well.
But I concur with you, both Mike as well as Kevin, that, that we need to be cognizant of and aware of the fact that this will most assuredly be a, not a drain, but it will be taxing, poor choice of words, on certainly public service, public safety. And so, in terms of, I don't wanna necessarily get into a conversation of leverage yet. We hope that we can all play nice in the sandbox, and maybe we can, you know, enter into friendly negotiations by which the town of Wilmington can realize some type of remuneration or something for those services that are rendered. Because I agree, I mean, this is, we're not adding five, five housing units here, this is a substantial housing project that most assuredly will impact traffic as well as our public safety. So, you know, we'll start the conversations in a pleasant manner and hope that we can resolve and come to a mutually beneficial resolution, and we'll see where that takes us. Hopefully, we won't have to exercise any kind of specific leverage, I guess. But there'll be, there will be more on that. We'll be getting to public comments in a short while. Jeff, if you want to continue?
Next, under correspondence, is a bulletin from the Mass Municipal Association about the two thousand eighteen budget. You probably recall from the news accounts that the legislature had approved a forty-point-two billion dollar budget. In fact, the governor just today signed it, as I understand, there were some vetoes, although it didn't affect local aid. From the town's perspective, the good news is that unrestricted general government aid across the state was increased by thirty-nine point nine million dollars. Wilmington's share of that was a little over ninety-three thousand dollars. Chapter seventy, school aid, was increased by four point seven-five billion dollars, roughly thirty dollars per student. Wilmington's share was thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Is, one point of interest is that the state did have to reduce its revenue projections by seven hundred million because of the lack of collections that they've experienced during this fiscal year. The overall impact on the town in terms of local aid is that the amount we will be receiving is roughly one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars more than was budgeted, so those funds will go to free cash. Next, under correspondence is information from Reading Municipal Light about a summer art contest for high school students, and they note here that they're inviting students from all four of the member communities to participate in this program. The contest kicks off with an educational session to be held at RMLD's office on Tuesday, August first, at six P.M., and they are encouraging high school students to participate in this contest.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a board to consider authorizing the town treasurer to execute loan agreement from the Mass Water Resources Authority for Ballard Street Water, Maine. And Jeff, if you wanna expand on the description of that?
Yes, you will recall, at the annual town meeting, there was approval granted for one million fifty thousand dollars for reconstruction of thirty-six hundred linear feet of waterline, increasing the waterline from a six-inch line to a twelve-inch line. The line has been cut off now for a couple of years because of issues associated with trying to get a new connection over ninety-three. The portion of those funds, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars, we are seeking to have access to from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority. It's a ten-year, no-interest loan, so the annual repayment is sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars. By virtue of the fact that we are a partially water community with the MWRA, we have access to this loan program, and it's my recommendation that the board take the necessary votes. There's actually two particular votes that would be required, the first being that the sale of a six hundred and eleven thousand dollar water bond of the town dated August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority is hereby approved, and the town treasurer or other appropriate town office officials is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on August fifteenth of the years and in principal amounts as follows, and it references the years being two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-seven. And then further, that the board also vote that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote. So this is similar in some respects to the vote the board took, I believe it was the last meeting with the bond anticipation note, except that this is a no-interest loan.
Thank you. So I understand there have to be two specific votes that are necessary. If someone were inclined to make a motion, I suppose the right way to handle it might be to reread on the second page of the memo that we have, where it says voted, that the sale of six hundred and eleven thousand yada, yada. So if someone was inclined to do so, I'd accept that motion now.
I'll make a motion.
So your, your motion would read exactly as the paragraph, that's the second paragraph on page two?
Sale of the six hundred and eleven water bond, yes, sir.
Okay. I'll accept that as a made motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there more discussion on that topic? All in favor of that? Unanimous, thank you. I would accept a motion where it says further voted, for the language as indicated in that paragraph.
So moved.
I have that motion and a second is the discussion on that. I see none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, as was done with the prior bond anticipation note, I would suggest that the board can sign these after the meeting.
Very well, so we could all just hang in there for a few moments at the end of conclusion of the meeting, thank you. We've already voted on number seven, so we'll move to number eight. A board to consider the request of Karen Campbell, our recreation director, to use the town common and gazebo on Wednesday, August second, from six-thirty P.M. for a concert on the common. And we have that request in front of us. I don't think there's any, any reason for concern on this at all, Jeff.
No.
So I would accept a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
I have the motion.
Second.
And a second. Any, any discussion on it? I see none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I hope that will be well-attended, they usually are. The board to consider the request to install a stop sign at the intersection of Garden Ave and King Street. Jeff, I'm gonna ask you to review the nature of this request and any recommendations that we're receiving.
Yes, this request was received by a resident seeking a stop sign at this particular intersection. It was reviewed by Jamie McGoldy and Deputy Chief Bob Richter, and the recommendation was that a stop sign is not warranted at this particular intersection. The mechanism by which they look at these requests is the Federal Highway Administration's manual on uniform traffic control devices. They have certain standards that apply as to when traffic signage should be instituted, and there are four particular, what they refer to as warrants, to be considered here. And after looking at each of those criteria, if you will, it was determined that this intersection does not merit a stop sign at this location.
I appreciate this individual writing this letter and requesting this. I think it came as a result of an accident that may have occurred there, and I certainly feel for their, their passion on the issue. I guess the intersection, King Street is a fairly prominent, busy street, and Garden that approaches it isn't, and I think there's a fair amount of common sense there that individuals ought to be cautious before entering the busier, larger road. And as you stated, the warrants or the requirements aren't met, that would authorize us or, I guess, give us the, the ability to be able to request that, that sign to be placed there. So I don't, I don't want to give Mr. Protopopis the indication that we're taking that request lightly, please, yes?
Yeah, I just, if we can have discussion, I don't see a problem with the request, knowing that it's coming down a hill, you're coming onto a busy street, as you mentioned, you're probably gonna stop anyways. There's a stop sign directly on the other side of the street. I don't have a problem with the, I just wanted to be noted that I don't think it would be a bad idea.
Okay.
I know we don't meet the requirements, or that's the opinion of the town engineers, but I just wanted to be noted that I don't have a problem with the request. In fact, I would be prepared to offer a motion if that was appropriate, if there was support. If not, I understand.
Could I, in the interest of discussion, Greg, because I was troubled by this too. You know, I live very, I'm on that street every day. I will be in fifteen minutes. And one of the warrants they talked about was King Street sort of not, they call it a dead end, even though it's not really a dead end, by what I would call as a dead end as a standard. And so they deemed it, that warrant as not being satisfied, but King Street does come to Broad Street, and there are two developments and neighborhoods that come off of that. So while it may not be the formal adherence to that warrant, I want, I'd be willing to ask the town manager to maybe again review that specific warrant with Deputy Chief Richter and see if perhaps that's, there's some flexibility based on that warrant, because I don't really necessarily see a problem with the stop sign there, but I also don't wanna create a precedent for, to making these exceptions, so.
Long story short, it's a board to consider, I'm offered, I'm prepared to offer a motion to grant the request.
Okay, we have a motion.
I mean, I second the discussion. I mean, I understand what Select and Vindal are stating. Hey, you're the chair, you live in that area, you wanna, you see a stop sign there? Yeah.
You know, I, again, I'm trying to follow procedure, and so.
I understand, I, obviously, there's probably some liability to it, I would imagine, Jeff. I mean, I mean, you do have people looking at it, so I imagine with them saying no, it must be, obviously, they've stated their reason, so is there a liability to the community if we voted for that stop sign where public safety's saying this is not necessary?
I am not aware of a particular liability. I think what perhaps could be problematic going forward is, to the extent that, you know, this criteria, if you will, has been established by the Federal Highway as a means to determine when it's appropriate to have traffic control signs, you know, to the extent that exceptions are made to that, it becomes kind of a slippery slope.
Well, if I may just offer one more thing, excuse me, Mr. Karen, is that, that it's appropriate to have a stop, stop sign ten feet across?
Well, actually, yeah, I did talk to Mike Woods about that sign, and apparently, that sign, it's not clear when it was put up, but it was not authorized by the board of selectmen. It was apparently, for whatever reason, it was put up at some point in the past, and so from a traffic enforcement standpoint, the police would not be able to enforce that sign because it was not authorized by the board of selectmen.
I'd like to ask that we review it further. You know, I think that there is some, some merit to the idea that King Street is a through street, in spite of it being defined as, as a dead end and number two on our memo. I think it's a through street, and I know that traffic goes fast on that street. I just know that it does. So I'm not opposed to it, I just wanna follow procedure, and if there's flexibility on, on the definition of number two, then perhaps that warrant could be met, and that would give us justification for placing this sign there. Currently, I couldn't vote in favor of it with all four warrants being deemed as not satisfied personally, but you have a, I have a motion and a second, so we're gonna take a vote, but Mike?
They also, I'm sorry, would they also be looking at, you're saying supposedly there's a stop sign that sounds like it's been put there illegally, maybe they need to take a look at that one as well? And if that, they warrant the stop sign there, then maybe the other sign still be, would be fine.
There is a stop sign there, as you said, but there's also another one down on Broad Street, King Street and Broad Street as well, so there are two stop signs. And I think coming out of that opposite side of Garden Street, I think you would go slow. I mean, common sense would tell you, you're in a, in an area where you, it's a, yeah, narrow road, and you would drive a little bit slower when you're coming out of that, that roadway, so I don't, I would have to go with the recommendations.
We look at Chief Richter's recommendation. He's asking that we contact the owner of seventeen King Street to cut down a tree.
The other note, just for what it's worth, there, the review of the- The other note, just for what it's worth, the review of the crash records from 2014 indicated only one accident at this intersection. I believe one of the parties was under the influence at the time.
It's not a high accident intersection, clearly, but there was an accident fairly recently and that has inspired this individual to look for a way to minimize the danger in the area. So I don't want to thwart discussion. I think everyone's had an opportunity to speak. I do have a motion, and I think, Mr. McCoy, you did second it, yes?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So at this point, all in favor of the stop sign as it's presented to us? I have two. So the motion doesn't pass. However, I'm going to ask Jeff, I guess formally here, to see if Deputy Chief Richter or Chief Begonis are willing to review.
Could we take a vote to oppose? You had, you voted in favor.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Well, two in favor, I presumed to mean three opposed, so I apologize for not going to the formal exercise of asking for opposed. So all in favor was two, opposed to the motion. So thank you, Kevin, for formalizing that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm opposed right now. But if we can get further discussion about this, that'd be better.
I agree with you. That's what I was about to say to Jeff, is I'm opposed to it as I have it today, but I'd like to see if we could maybe get a second review of it.
We'll do.
Yeah, I can see myself and Mr. Benno getting invited to the block party. No problem. That'd be great.
Thank you all. And Kevin, thank you for catching me on procedure. I appreciate it. We are at the block party.
Yes.
Board to consider the request of Mr. Mark Nelson to conduct a block party on Sunday, September 3rd, 2017, from noon to 11:00. Jeff?
That's pretty much it. No issues by the police chief or the fire chief.
So I would accept a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
I have that motion.
Seconded.
And I have it seconded. Any conversation, discussion? I see none, all in, I'm sorry, yes.
If I may, I think the same request came before us last year. Did we look at the times? Did we adjust the times last year? If my memory serves me correctly?
You're meaning, is it?
I just want to be consistent with what we did last year.
Last year was a Friday, so it's happening to Tuesday, so they did adjust it.
Oh, they did.
But that was, this is Sunday, and that is Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. The location is?
Polk Street.
Polk Street.
It's residents.
6 Polk Street. So I'm sorry, I think we've had discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of granting the request? It is unanimous. Thank you. We already did number 11. Board to consider, number 12 is board to consider request of Wilmington Rotary Club to use the Rotary Park for third community ice bucket challenge on Saturday, August 19th at 10:30 AM. Mr. Hall?
Yes. Again, this is a request to, by Rotary to conduct this ice bucket challenge to raise funds for ALS. Nearly $10,000 has been raised through the past two ice bucket challenges. The event would run from 8:00 until 3:00 PM, and that would be on August 19th.
It has been a very well-attended event in the last couple of years, and so I hope that everyone will be in favor of this. Is there any, I'm sorry, I'd accept a motion to that?
Make a motion.
Motion's made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Discussion. I hear none. All in favor? Request granted. Thank you very much. Again, look for, I would ask the residents to look for more communication and publicity about that, and please consider attending.
Next is a request from Rotary to use the Swain Green to host a movie night Wednesday, August 16th, 7:30 PM.
Any concerns that you're aware of from any departments?
No.
A motion to grant this request?
So moved.
I have that motion.
Seconded.
And a second from Mr. Loud. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor? Granted. Thank you very much. Public comments? Yes, public comments. Yes, Mr. McDonald. We're going to be brief, given the hour, if that's all right, but please go ahead.
Well, I was hoping to talk about a couple things when you were bringing them up, so that I didn't have to rehash it. But if you'd just be a little patient with me, the things that I wanted to discuss actually concern the entire town rather than me personally. As you know, when businesses go into a location and they establish their business, they'll enter into an agreement for, say, a vacant building, and they undertake what's called a build-out, where they put their equipment in and their, their interest items that accommodate their business interest. So I noticed that you went into an executive session tonight to discuss 190 Main Street, which is the hockey rink. And so my question is, do you actually know if the town does take this property, what you're actually getting? Keeping in mind my other comments about when a business comes into a building and they bring their own equipment and their own items to facilitate their business, can you speak on that as to what, what you know extensively that the town would get or not get?
Well, obviously, you know it's an executive session, so we're not going to reveal or publicize or really have any conversation about what the nature of the conversation is during executive session. You are presuming things, and so I'm not in a position to corroborate or deny anything that you're saying, because it is, in fact, executive session. But I can just simply summarize my response, and I don't want to preclude any of my colleagues from responding if they care to. But I can tell you that my response is that the town has been and continues to be very diligent in reviewing what is in the best interest of the residents of this community. And I'll leave it at that. And we do that with regards to this project and all others.
I respect that. I just want to emphasize this fact, diligence with regard to items that may not have been in the building prior to a tenant building it out for a purpose of his business.
Your point is made. Thank you.
The other comment that I have, a couple of the comments I have, one is the impact to our Salem Street wellfield. I just did a very quick calculation without knowing the amount of bedrooms and the amount of tenants that are going to be in the 450-unit building. Just a very quick mathematical calculation, very conservative, would be at least 130,000 gallons a day being deposited into the ground beside our wellfield. Keeping in mind that we've had five wellfields shut down, and keeping in mind that this project, to the best of my knowledge, is not going to be serviced by sewer. And so what I'd like to offer in terms of a suggestion would be for this board to take action to protect those wells. If we are somehow limited on what we can do to affect that project in a way that's going to benefit us, I would like to see the town go to the state and try to put some pressure on the developers to use some type of innovative means for their septic systems, such as innovative treatments, so that our wellfield isn't being not only impacted but destroyed. I mean, you don't really need to be losing any more wells. And the other couple items that I mentioned is, would like to talk about is, you took a vote to have Mass DOT replace the bridge. And I presume that you did that without having a public meeting and proper notification to the abutters that could be impacted with a land-taking in order to build that bridge. And I just don't know how you can take a vote to request Mass DOT to replace the bridge as a bigger bridge, which I'm presuming would take a land-taking. And so I just don't, as far as liability is concerned, I'm concerned about the abutters and the legal ramifications to the town. If you go ahead tonight with this vote and have them do that, I just don't know how you can do that, you know? So I just wanted to note that. With regard to the stop sign, I mean, I don't know why it has to be a big act of Congress. If it saves one life, what's the big deal for putting a stop sign there? You know, it's a relatively low-traveled street. But I'll be honest with you, I've gone through some streets in town where they have a stop sign, and it's very deceiving if you go down Federal Street and when you're crossing Federal Street, when you're crossing Wilmington Street, Federal Street continues to a new subdivision, and that's an extremely dangerous intersection in the daytime or nighttime. And so at the end of my street, good friends of our family lost a kid who was killed in a car accident before they had traffic lights there. And that action that they took, one resident, all it took was one resident to really push for traffic lights there, and I'm sure it saved a lot of lives. So, you know, if a stop sign saves at least one life, I don't know why you want to make a big act of Congress out.
Well, I can just simply say, I don't think that any acts of Congress are necessary here. I think we took an appropriate level of action here to follow precedent, to follow some procedure, and to request that our town manager go back and revisit this. We didn't just categorically say, no, no stop sign. We said no stop sign based on the information we have at our fingertips today. But that doesn't mean that there will never be a stop sign, it means we're going to go back and review it. So I think what we, the way that we handled it, frankly, ought to be viewed by the general, the wider population, as a pragmatic, intelligent approach to this type of request. So that's my opinion on it. You're certainly entitled to yours, but I happen to think that yours is wrong. So your last point tonight is?
Well, the last comment that I have is, the people in town who pay cable bills every month, a portion of that goes to what's called PEG, and it goes to Wilmington Community Television. And so the subject matter of transparency came up tonight, and I believe it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that go to them from the cable providers. And so you're talking about community technical review teams having input and discussions on projects such as Global, such as these other projects. And I just don't know why that the community television can't be broadcasting these community technical meetings and addressing the issues of transparency. So, you know, with regard to the Global station, I was at the meeting the other night, and there was a person that came forward, and he mentioned about zoning issues, that it actually contradicted zoning because an access road was coming through residential to go into a general business. And he said, and he pointed out from the zoning, that that is not allowed in our zoning. And so.
Well, you're spiraling all over the place. Certainly, I mean, anyone, that was a publicized, I'm sorry, that was a broadcast televised meeting, by the way, that you're referring to. So in terms of transparency, the town and WCTV, to their credit, make concerted efforts to broadcast all open meetings and, or as many as is, are feasible to be able to do. So I'm going to endorse and put my public support behind WCTV. That being said, you know, anyone who wishes to avail themselves of the level of conversation and what took place at the planning board meeting, which was, I believe, last Monday, that entire meeting is available to be viewed and slowed down and viewed again on, I forget it. If you go to WCTV's website, there's a link there and you can find it. I forget the exact URL. It's available, and so, you know, I'm not going to allow, I guess I don't, I don't want to rehash then all of the conversation from that planning board meeting here in this meeting tonight. Your points are certainly received. We understand you may have some thoughts on that, and I think those thoughts are probably best rearticulated to planning board when this matter comes up again.
My only point was, when you had the issue of transparency come up, these community technical review team meetings are in the day, during the mornings usually when people are at work. So why not have, I mean, you have all kinds of equipment here where they could actually be recorded. And I don't know why you just don't record the meeting and televise it when people come home, so they can watch it, and they wouldn't be able to say that this is a lack of transparency.
Well, I guess, at what point do you start putting TVs in every, I mean, there's meetings that happen in this building every day, all day long, from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. Not every meeting gets recorded and televised. This was a, I'm sorry, Jeff, I mean, if you want to rearticulate what the nature of this meeting was?
It's a internal meeting that happens with and between department heads, and, you know, as we have meetings that happen during the full course of the day, not every single meeting is televised. And I think we certainly go above and beyond in terms of being open and transparent. That meeting in particular was attended by a number of people who apparently were interested in it, so I think we're doing fine.
Are you saying that a community technical review team meeting is internal and cannot be attended by the general public? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, you're not hearing that at all. I think I've made it very clear.
Internal meeting, so I mean, I'm just trying to get a little bit of a definition on that.
The individuals that attended that meeting aren't the individuals that get to place a vote, whether that vote, those votes were at Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals. The individuals that were at that meeting were not members of the teams that will ultimately cast a vote on this or any project. The individuals that are there are the experts, our town engineers, you know, the other department heads, I imagine, from the building department as well, who the voters, I'm sorry, the members of the planning boards, zoning board of appeals, or any other committee or team that has authority or jurisdiction depend on for expert testimony and advice. So it's, to me, it's completely logical that we would want our staff, town hall and Wilmington's staff, to have an understanding of what the proposal is, so that those same staff can make recommendations to those that would ultimately have to cast a vote. And that's the nature, I think, of what was going on at that meeting.
And I totally agree with you, but my point is, why don't you have Wilmington Community Television down here, who's receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars from the cable provider to televise those meetings?
I'll tell you why.
So there is transparency.
I'll tell you why. We already answered the question. Because we can't possibly, it would be completely illogical and irresponsible for us to suggest that WCTV should have a camera and a microphone in every single meeting that goes on in this building. We have cameras at the meetings that are public meetings that are after hours, here they are here this evening. It was, it's not the type of meeting that would be necessary to have cameras in and have it publicized on WCTV. It just isn't. It's a meeting that was available for folks to attend, there were some folks from the public that were there, but these are the type of meetings that happen during the business day, because they're being conducted by people that are working regular work hours. So I'm going to conclude personally. If anyone else wants to speak on this, I'm glad to open it up, but I think we're done talking about this.
Certainly are.
Thank you very much. New business, items not reasonably anticipated, the chairman, me, 48 hours in advance of the meeting.
Public comments?
Oh, not tonight, you don't.
Mr. Bodnar.
Oh, Mr. Bodnar, how are you, sir?
Great to see you. I think you all know me. One quick comment to you directly and also other members of the board. And again, it's on this global issue at the corner of Weston Lowell. What are your views? And I'd like to know the views of each and every one of you, if that's possible.
I'll give you my answer. It doesn't preclude anybody from, that doesn't mandate anybody else answer. My views are that the process should follow, the, it should be open and transparent, and we should follow the process that is appropriate and applicable to any project that a petitioner would want to have take place in town. Do I think Global is the perfect recipe for that? I don't know yet. I don't know if I, I don't have enough information to make a determination as to whether or not a gas station is the perfect project for that spot. But I can tell you that I am not at a position yet to be able to make a knee-jerk reaction that says, no, no gas station. Give me more information. Let me learn. Let me listen to the data. Let me read the data that comes before. Let me watch the meetings or attend them, and I will, at some point, formulate a response, just like the planning board has pushed this forward, because they don't have the right information yet to make a formal decision. I don't feel like I have enough information to give you a straight answer as to, do I, am I in favor or am I opposed? We don't have enough information yet. Let the process flow organically and naturally, and at some point, I will create an opinion on that. And I'm not, I'll never be ashamed to share what my, what the. And I'm not, I'll never be ashamed to share what that opinion is. That's where I am today. Ask me again in a year.
Thank you for that comment. Any of you other selectmen care to push your opinion on?
If I may, I share your same sentiments there, and appreciate that. And also, having just received this packet this weekend, I'd be hesitant to take a vote on anything. I've been focused on the things we needed to vote on tonight.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? I didn't want to stop anyone else from speaking. Thank you very much. So we are under new business, and if it's okay, I will start off to my right with Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, sir. I have a couple things, if I may. I want to give a special thanks to the Fourth of July Committee and all the volunteers that made the Fourth of July week an awesome week here for the community. And I'm glad to report that there were no major incidents and that everybody made it home safe, and it was a terrific, terrific event, well-attended, and I congratulate all those who volunteered their time to make it such a success. On a similar note, I'd like to encourage folks to attend the National Night Out on August 1st before our next meeting, put on by Public Safety in the Town. It's a wonderful night, I've attended in the past, I think this will be a similar success. I hope for good weather. I want to update the town quickly on the substance abuse coordinator position. Spoke with the town manager earlier today. A candidate will be hopefully selected this week and offered the position, so we'll be able to move forward with that for the people of Wilmington. I have one more, I'd like to give a quick shout-out, if I may, to a young, little girl in town, a sweet, sweet girl, Charlie, who's in the fight of her life. Her and her family have a website set up, you can check out Charlie Strong on Facebook to follow their fight, and if you want to find a way to contribute to their family, you can visit Charlie Strong on Facebook. And I want to let Charlie know that the entire community is with her during this difficult time. And lastly, on a high note, because I just went through this myself, I want to give a big shout-out and congratulations to our very own town moderator, his wife, who welcomed their first child just last week. So congratulate to them, and I'm pleased to report that everyone is doing well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Bendel. Mr. Carr?
I echo his remarks. What I'd like to bring up is maybe something to mull over, or something that we can talk about in the future, is Silver Lake, the beach in Silver Lake. I received some phone calls and some correspondence in regards to the charge that we're imposing upon non-residents. I think it's a $10 fee for non-residents. I don't know really the history of it, I know at one point, the charge was $3, I think, for non-residents, and it's increased since. And, you know, the issue came up when a resident is bringing four grandchildren, and the grandchildren are out of town, and then they have to pay $40. It just doesn't feel right that a grandparent is bringing their grandchildren, who's a resident in town, and formerly the children were residents before they moved out and had children, and now they're bringing them to the beach and they're charged $40. You know, I think we need to look at that. I don't have the perfect solution for it, but that's why I want to bring it up to mull it over. I know we're in the middle of beach season now, probably can't be changed, you can't, you know, change the rules in the middle of the game, but something for next year to look at. I know that maybe the residents are entitled to bring a guest at no charge, that might be an option, or maybe a maximum pay of $15, you know, if you're bringing four or five grandkids or something. But I would like to revisit that for next year anyway. That's all I have.
That's it?
I just, yeah, no, I...
I agree.
I mean, we have the dog park, and we have, you know, we have out-of-town residents, I'm assured, that are using the dog park, and their dogs, out-of-town dogs are going there for nothing. But we go to the beach and we charge our grandkids $10. So we're helping the dogs, we're not helping the children. I think we need to take a look at them.
Yeah, I think the spirit of it was to try to really make it a Wilmington-based facility, but I agree, you know, I think that might have gone off the rails a little bit. So message received, I think, I imagine, Jeff?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
I'm going to go online, if I could. I just wanted to mention to you, again, I wanted to echo Mr. Bendel in really complimenting the entire town and any guests that were here over the course of the Fourth of July holiday. To me, it felt like the way it's supposed to be. It was a little bit smaller, perhaps, than celebrations had been back when the old high school was in place, but smaller isn't necessarily worse. I thought it was really quite, a lot of fun. I think everyone that was down there enjoyed it, and it was, in my opinion, more of a Wilmington-based celebration. So kudos to everybody who participated and attended and had a good time. Lastly, or additionally, I had the opportunity, or I took the opportunity, to attend a meeting of the Mass Selectment Association last Thursday. It was held up at Endicott College. By the way, that's a beautiful place. But anyway, the subject matter was 40B and low-income housing, because as we have learned and will continue to learn, all communities are faced with the impending 2020 census, and really, a good number of our counterpart cities and towns in the region are facing the same potential dilemma as we. So it was just interesting to sort of hear different perspectives. There were a few experts, experts from mass housing, as well as a consultant that were there, sort of talking about strategies and stuff. So anyway, it was worthwhile to just sort of kibbutz a little bit with our counterparts from various communities. And last thing I wanted to mention is this, Town Topics, there you go, all of you probably have received it in the mail. I really just, I want to encourage everyone to, there's a lot of text there, but there's a lot of valuable information going on. It really talks about events and activities that are going on throughout town over the course of the summer and into September. And so really, just take a few moments and browse through it. There is literally something happening for every age throughout the town of Wilmington, and I encourage everyone to take part in as many things as possible. So that's it from me. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I'm sure all of us get phone calls all the time, I want to talk about unaccepted ways. And I know there are 351 cities and towns, and I'm sure they hear the same. And I know the manager does as best as he can to do with that. And I did talk to him about a certain individual, once again, about unaccepted ways, but it seems like an ongoing thing. I mean, everybody here could probably name at least 10 streets that people talk to about unaccepted ways. And I'd just like to ask the manager, maybe through you, Mr. Chairman, you know, Jeff, your thoughts, is there any possibility of maybe sending a letter to our legislative delegation? Because it's an issue with the state. I know they do funding, and maybe there are certain things that they, they make certain appropriations when it comes to, you know, sidewalks and streets and, you know, obviously education. Maybe there's something that they can come up with some type of formula to help communities when it comes to unaccepted ways. You know, it's just, I know people pay the same amount of taxes they pay on one street like they pay on, say, if you're on the drive or something like that. But, you know, it's just to keep the discussion going, because we deal with it a lot, and I'm always hearing about it. And I'm sure the manager hears about it more than us. And I know he's doing a decent job to, as far as, to see what we can try to figure out.
Yeah, the challenge with unaccepted ways is that they essentially, by the fact that they're unaccepted, they are private ways, so they are not, by virtue of the fact they have not been accepted by town meeting vote, they are, they're not public, they're private spaces. And so the challenge, as I've mentioned to all the various folks over the years who have called me about paying to resurface or improve private ways, is we can't spend public tax dollars on private property anymore than we can, you know, pay to put a basketball court on somebody's private property. We can't spend private, public money on private ways. So I would suspect that the, our legislative delegation will have that same struggle, you know, that they also cannot seek funding to provide to cities and towns to pay for improvements to private, what effectively is private property. You know, I had a conversation with Mike Woods about this issue this morning, just to inquire if he was aware of any funding that the state might have for private ways, and he was not, you know, aware of any, and again, made the point that the challenge is that this, by virtue of the fact that they're not public ways, they are essentially private ways.
All right, thank you. Any other thing quick, I just wish my wife a happy birthday, I'll be home shortly, I'm sure she's watching, not. And, you know, so, if she's not watching, hey, happy 40th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Greg pointed out that Fourth of July was great. I want to just, one event that I went to was the Firemen and Policemen Baseball Softball Game. It was a lot of fun, those guys, to see those guys in different elements, because they work very hard for the community. They had a lot of fun. I sure hope they raised a lot of funds for their charities that they had that day, and I hope next year that it's even more attended. But it was a lot of fun to be there. Also, something that I want to start tonight, I think that the unique platform that I have here at this time is unique for me. And one of the things that is near and dear to me is the armed services and people that serve in, for our country. And I, with the help of Lou, I called him Friday, and I will call him every week when I have a meeting. I'd like to shout out to Zachary Lamuro, he's in the Army, he's currently serving in Syria. And I want to thank, and Zach's mom is Maureen, the photographer from the town crier. So not only is Zach in Syria fighting for this country, but his parents are here in Wilmington or Tewksbury or in the surrounding communities, thanking of Zach. And I just want to let them know that we are too, so, that's all. So thank you for that time.
It's great, Ed. I'm glad, we'll be glad to hear every week when you come. Thank you, sir.
I'm a big, I have three recent nephews that were veterans, two of them were very well-helped by Lou. Both of them were disabled at some point. One lived down in Georgia, and Lou still sent them packages. So I'm a big supporter of the veterans and the current military, not only the military person themselves, but their families. So I see what they've gone through, and I really appreciate it. So this time at every meeting, and I don't mind going last because I'm the new guy, Greg steals all of our thunders, that's okay, we can handle that.
I went last last year, so.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm trying to go back and forth, but whether you're first or last or otherwise.
But when I spoke to Lou, he, without hesitation, mentioned Zachary's name, so we hope he gets home soon.
It's a welcome addition to the meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes, just a few items I'd like to reference on a new business. The Senator Tara's office advised us that the program that was planned for suspension of service on the Lowell line, they have actually changed, modified the schedule slightly in acknowledgement of the Lowell Folk Fest. So the plans, you'll recall, were to shut down the train service beginning in July, that has been changed. So the dates now will begin Saturday, August 15th through Sunday, October 1st. There's some improvements that are required per federal law that, to the track system that they need to implement. They will be providing a bus shuttle service between the stops during that time. Also, just wanted to note that we received notice from National Grid that they are replacing a main between 140 and 226 Lowell Street, which is the area between Maple Meadow and Burger King. The construction will go on between July 24th through September 24th, and there are 31 services in the area that will, 31 properties that will receive new services. Construction is taking place between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday to Friday. Anybody with questions can call 781-907-3804, or go to their website at ngrid.com backslash serviceline. And then finally, I just want to note that the, there was a notice that went out to residents in the Woburn Street area that the Public Works Department will be installing drainage improvements in the 236 to 194 Woburn Street area beginning this week. So just be on the lookout for that.
Thank you. Can I just ask a quick, Jeff?
Utilities, National Grid's going to run a line, I know we put a brand-new road out there 10 years ago. Are they going to, where, is it in the sidewalk, is it in the street? I assume it's in the street. What's going to happen with that?
I don't know the exact location. I'm guessing, and it is just a guess, it would be on the, along the edge of the road, but I would have to confirm. My expectation is that they're going to be required to restore the road to its existing condition to the greatest degree possible.
Is that just going to be like the two-foot or whatever they cut? Or is it going to go from one sidewalk to the other sidewalk?
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be curb-to-curb repavement, I would have to check.
They have to do what they got to do, but I just want to let you know, I mean, we went through heaven and earth to do things out there, and now that they're going to cut into that road, I mean, if they're going to cut into the road, I wish they wouldn't run sewer like they were originally going to do, but that never happened. You know, and they were going to do that, but that didn't happen, so I just, you know, leave it to you, Mr. Manager, to make sure that they...
That was probably less than 10 years ago, wasn't it, Mike?
I thought they said they did some work here.
But that should definitely be curb-to-curb if they're ripping up a whole new road.
Yeah.
I will check on that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If nothing else, Jeff, I'll ask you to highlight important dates, please.
So important dates, we have July 19th, Concert on the Common, the performers are ball in the house, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Then again, on July 26th, Concert on the Common, 60's Invasion, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. August 1st is the Wilmington Police Department National Night Out at Rotary Park. August 2nd is Brush Drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. August 2nd is another Concert on the Common, Jimmy and the Jesters, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. August 3rd, Police Association Beach Day, Town Beach, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. August 5th is a Brush Drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. August 10th is the Library Summer Bash, Swain Green, 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. August 13th, Hardenham Tavern Open House, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. August 14th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9 at 7:00 PM. August 19th is the Ice Bucket Challenge, Rotary Park, 10:30 AM.
Thank you.
I might be here on August 14th.
Oh.
Just so you know.
Oh, okay. Are you, Mr. McCoy, are you going to be here at the August 14th meeting?
No, I'm not going to be able to.
I'll be on vacation.
So we've got two abs, but we'll still have a quorum, so we'll blaze them forward.
No pressure to show up, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you for letting us know that. If there's nothing else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn if that's been made by Mr. Loud.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. And good evening. By the way, let's convene and sign those...